From, as I address some of the findings and that, I'm coming from a background of thirty-five years in the, of public service, starting from a nine-one-one dispatcher up through a fire chief when I retired. For about half my career, I did what I loved in responding to fire calls and EMS calls. You know, when, when the call came in and someone needed help, we jumped on and went to them. And I can't say enough about firefighters and EMS and law enforcement people that do that, because you, part of the excitement of their careers, you never know what you're gonna be going into. In the second half of the, the career then, I spent driving a desk as a chief officer in the various aspects of the, of the department, and ultimately retiring as a fire chief. So I've had the opportunity to see most, all of the aspects of, of the fire service. I've, I grew up and worked in a community surprisingly a lot like Reno County and Hutchinson. I hail from Eau Claire, Wisconsin, which is about ninety miles east of Minneapolis, St. Paul. And it's a community of about sixty thousand, surrounded by townships of totaling about another sixty thousand. So the entire county is around one hundred and twenty thousand in the population. The city is obviously a career fire department, but all the townships around the city are volunteers. And it's, it's a lot like it, a lot like it is here. The weather was a lot nicer here yesterday than back home, I'll say that, but we didn't have too bad of winter. So I grew up in my career, working with volunteers, training with volunteers. As I became an instructor for the local tech college and the National Fire Academy, I, I trained volunteers. I've been trained by volunteers in, in fire service skills. I have attended their conventions. I served the local volunteer fire chief for our, our combined volunteers, which is known as Township Fire Department Incorporated. Their chief was the president and the Wisconsin State Fire Chief when I was on the executive board. So I, I like to think that I have a flavor and experience with working with both career fire professionals and volunteer fire professionals. And, you know, whether you're a career person or a volunteer, we always said, we're still professionals, and when the call to the service comes in, we respond accordingly, and we can work side by side, because at least as I grew up, we were all trained to the same fundamental level, with varying levels of expertise and specialties. Beyond my career, while I was in the fire service, I went and worked and obtained my master's degree in risk control, being familiar with OSHA standards, with NFPA standards, with building codes. That education helped me a lot when I was the fire prevention chief, in being able to go and work pre-planned, and as a fire chief, when you go to budget time and, and have to, to battle for what you need, as you know, that, that's a universal thing. So I, I've, I've been involved in that. I'm, I'm proud of my service. I've, there's, if there's a brotherhood across the country, that, you know, everybody gets into the, the public service line of work, including your work as commissioners, for the reasons of wanting to serve and do the right thing and helping folks. So I appreciate what you do as well. Unlike Wisconsin, however, Kansas is structured a little bit differently in terms of state statutes and how it addresses the emergency services, at least the fire service. Wisconsin has adopted OSHA standards by reference. It's not an OSHA state per se, but the state legislator has adopted them by reference and put it into their own administrative rules. And they also have its own, their own department, currently is called the Safety and Professional Services Department, that goes around and enforces those rules. So when I was a deputy chief in Eau Claire, the Wisconsin inspector came up to Eau Claire and said, "I'm here to do an audit on your records and what you're doing with the fire department, to see if you're complying with the state slash OSHA standards, as well as the other aspects of the city." And I thought we were doing pretty good, but by the time he left, I had a half a dozen pages of orders, you know, to, to clean up. Nothing major, but we were held accountable. Kansas doesn't really have something like that, to my knowledge. And in terms of training, that same agency, Safety and Professional Services, sets standards for firefighters and law enforcement officers, and they basically say, "You have to have this minimum level of training if you're gonna be a firefighter to go into a burning building." And, you know, there are courses that they approve, and you take them and you test out, and, you know, you just can't join up and say, "I wanna be a firefighter, put on a coat and go in and put the wet stuff on the red stuff," as they say. Kansas is not like that totally, and Joe, please jump in anytime I'm getting off track, based on, on your knowledge on that. Kansas is a strong, what I call a home rule state. Wisconsin's similar to that in a lot of cases. But in terms of the fire service, Kansas is saying, "It's up to the local authority having jurisdiction to determine what standards you wanna have for the people that are gonna be doing your work." So while there are lots of standards out there, again, as you mentioned, the OSHA standards, particularly nineteen-ten, one-twenty, where it refers to respiratory protection and what you have to do to be able to wear a respirator and be prepared, hazardous material, if you're gonna be exposed to those at all. You get to the NFPA standards, and we'll talk about these, you know, they're all out there, but they have to be adopted in order to be enforceable on a local level. So Kansas is saying, "You do what you see fit, and we'll trust that you will do what's right to protect not only the, the fire service people, but to help them provide the highest level of service to the community." So it's, it's a little bit of a challenge when you come in and you say, "Well, you're not doing this," because technically, you don't have to do it, unless you want to locally. There are a couple of things, though, in Kansas where there are mandates, and some, some of the stat, there are statutory requirements, provide guidance on how fire districts are formed, and those are located, I put some of those as attachments in the report. One specific example I'll give you is KSA twenty-two dash five dash one, which is attachment three, and it mandates fire reporting requirements. And it says, "Thou shalt submit a report when you're done with the call." And that goes to a national database, and that provides a lot of information for, for fire service improvement. So, you know, there are some of those that are saying, "Thou shalt," not a lot of them. Then if you jump to KSA nineteen dash thirty-six and one, it addresses your work as the Board of County Commissioners. And what it, it pretty much states is, "You are the governing body of each fire district within the county." And, you know, literally it's saying, "The buck stops at your desk. You are the CEO," whatever, you know, "If you're in business, you understand that if you're in charge, ultimately, you know, you, you make the decisions, and if something bad goes wrong, it ends up on your desk." Not unlike being a fire chief, the, the buck would stop on my desk, but if things were bad enough, the, the city manager would drag, you know, be dragged in and others. But, so Kansas statutes are basically saying, "You are it, okay? Good, bad, or indifferent." It also means that, as the commission, the way I interpret it and my, my take on it is, like any leadership role, you are cumulatively responsible for the success or failure of any system, as well as mitigating any adverse risk exposures, answering, you know, for whatever negative outcomes might occur. You know, you delegate to your subordinates in the chain of command with the county, and you work with them to do it, but ultimately, you are the leadership that, that gets, gets the ball rolling. And of course, as I mentioned, the fire chief is responsible for, for their department and working with you. So the worst-case scenario of something going awry, at least in terms of the fire service in the county, is you have a death or disability of a firefighter. And that unfortunately happens all too often yet. You look at firefighter death statistics and that, it's, it's dropped dramatically since the seventies, when I came on, because of improvements in equipment, management styles, incident command, things of that nature. But it hasn't gone away, and we're still seeing sometimes between a hundred and one-hundred and twenty firefighter deaths a year. Law enforcement has their same issues on that side. You know, the, the other negative outcomes that aren't quite as bad are significant injuries or disabilities to firefighters. And I'll also include to the general public in both of those categories. We hate seeing civilians die. Our goal is to protect life safety is our first and foremost charge with what we do. But when we have civilian deaths or dramatic injuries, we all pause and see what went on to cause that, and there is always in-depth investigations to determine how, how that worst-case scenario came out. Sometimes it has to do with building code structures, and sometimes it has to do with the way there's a performance. There is this notion of good Samaritan, and there is this notion of sovereign immunity, which I will tell you, if you are a member of a fire department and you are, and you are dispatched or you respond to a scene, you are, you are not a good Samaritan when you're in your official capacity, okay? And we'll talk about that a bit. An example is, my understanding, there are some firefighters in some of the districts that have no EMS, CPR training, they're just, you know, volunteer firefighters with, to work on fires, that respond to emergency medical calls when they go. That's fine if they're there to provide lifting power and patient movement under the direction of an EMT, but if they get on the scene and perform any type of intervention, medical intervention, they're beyond their scope of training. They can get in a lot of trouble, you know? They, they aren't trained to do that, and they're taking actions under the official capacity as a firefighter. There's, there's an example of where if they think they're covered by good Samaritan, it isn't. Sovereign immunity, we've always, I heard a lot about that, when I'm saying, "Well, you know, we work for this municipality, and, and you can't sue because of the sovereign immunity statute." Well, I would say, look at what's going on ninety miles west of my home in St. Paul with the law enforcement, and we've all watched that case, and with the now convicted police officer of murder, and he's in jail. There are a few civil lawsuits going on and about. I think Minneapolis is being sued civilly, I think the individuals being sued civilly. So sovereign immunity isn't really coming in to helping them in that case. So ultimately, if or when things go bad, there are some real risk exposures out there that go along with the way the departments are managed. And I'm sure you manage and mitigate those risks all the time, with Joe's help, through the various aspects of the city's business, and what you do and how you do it. But it doesn't appear that there's been a lot of attention given to the fire service in Reno County as to the types of things that are going on, and the type of risk that exposes the county to by virtue of you all being the governing body of the fire district. So there is a very strong and real tie-in, which should give a sense of urgency to making sure things are running smoothly all around, so, you know, people can sleep good at night. So as you're aware, there have been concerns regarding the fire district system. In fact, memos and letters that I included in the report date back nearly thirty-five years ago, and they demonstrate this is nothing new to Reno County. I met with the fire chiefs last night, I had a meeting, along with Adam and Todd, and as we began talking with the fire chiefs, I said, you know, "A few people have made a comment, 'Well, I don't know why you're here, I don't know why you've come in.'" And, you know, I said, "If anybody is naive enough to think there hasn't been some concerns about the fire service delivery over the past several decades, I think they've been, been living under a rock." And quite honestly, when I get a call to come in and do the type of work that I've done here with you, I said, "I don't get a call when things are going good. People don't call and say, 'Bruce, things are going great, would you come out here and do a study, okay?'" So, you know, I, I know that I'm coming into an uncomfortable situation, but I try to take, and I, I do take an open-minded approach to it, and look at them as challenges that can be dealt with in a positive way, rather than coming in and saying, you know, "Bad you, you better do all of this type of thing." And that's what I'm hoping the outcome of this will be. I'm gonna start just a little bit, if any of you are familiar with Stephen Covey, one of his tenets are, "You begin with the end in mind." So I'd like to make just a few comments about the results of the meeting last night, and then go into a brief presentation of the findings of the report that, that led to those results. I think all of the fire chiefs, except one, were there last night, okay? And, you know, everybody knew it was gonna be an uncomfortable situation, because we were gonna talk about some tough issues. One of the chiefs made a comment to Adam, and I started out with this comment, because I, I think it was pertinent to, to, to the whole situation, and quite honestly, you know, when you do this kind of work, you always wonder, "Okay, am I on target? Am I on target? Did I offend people? You know, what's gonna happen?" And I'll, I'll admit to, I mean, I've given presentations to city councils and commissions and that, but when you go in front of a board of your peers like, like last night, I'll admit to have been a little nervous going in there, because, you know, we're amongst, you know, people that, that do this for a living. Well, one of the fire chiefs made the comment to Adam early on, when he says, "I'm gonna be there, and I'm gonna see that Bruce goes home with his tails between his, with his tail between his legs, okay?" And then they read the report, and he called Adam back and said, "You know what? I don't necessarily like some of the outcomes of this report," but he said, "I can't disagree with anything in it. I'm not coming to the meeting." And to me, that spoke volumes, to be able to say, to have someone say they didn't disagree with the information that was in there. It gave me a little confidence and credence that, you know, we, we are onto something here, and there are ways that we can improve things. So we had a, about a two-hour meeting last night, some good input from, from some of the folks there, but not a lot of conversation. And after a couple of hours, when, you know, I had made my presentation and we had a little bit of discussion, I opted to leave and said, you know, "It's up to you folks all, how you wanna go through this." But I think it's notable for the commission to know, there weren't any objections saying, "This is baloney, what are you doing?" You know, it's, I mean, we had a hard discussion. So I, I think it was notable, the silence, to me, spoke a lot of volumes, saying, you know, "There is openness to evaluate what's going on, and, and there is an open mind for making improvements and doing some change." So I, I thought that was, that was awesome, you know? And I, I know that Adam and Todd hung around for a while, and they had some good conversations with, with the folks, and, and talked a bit about, like, training with, with Randy and that. And so I'm optimistic that when we're done here today, that, that you'll have a couple of avenues to choose from, to at least explore opportunities and determine whether or not you wanna make change. The, the last thing I'll say is, when this is all said and done, I, I would submit that the commission has a choice to make. There are, you have several options of which choices you want to make. But this has been around a long time, and what I would say is, is like we told the fire chiefs out there, this report has brought everything, it's on the table, and it's in black and white. The elephant's out of the corner of the room. You can't shove it back in and go back and think everything's going to go away. So when it's all said and done, the commission has, has a couple of choices, and one is to say, "Thank you very much, Bruce, for coming, we'll take this into consideration, have a nice trip back, okay?" The other choice is to take the information, go to the fire chiefs that, and those that are, that are anxious to make improvements, and figure out a strategic plan to move forward and make a change. If you chose, if you choose to make no change and let the press and continue, again, the information is on the table. And I guess to be really blunt, you know, nobody will be able to say, "I wasn't told." Nobody, nobody can, can take and look at this report and say, "I didn't know that was happening," because it's right there. So in essence, by having this study done and this information put out, either has to be disproved and shown not to be in the county's best interest, or it needs to be embraced and, and molded into something that works good for Reno County, because Reno County is, is unique. And by doing that, the commission is accepting a responsibility, and quite honestly, I would submit a liability, that if nothing is done and something bad happens, that a sharp attorney or whatever is going to come back and say, "Hmm, what went wrong here? Why, why didn't this happen?" And I, I don't think that's a challenge any, anybody wants to take on, at least not until you retire, I suppose. So that, that being said, I'm just gonna go through a, a brief PowerPoint with some points on it, and some of it's going to reiterate how what I had said, that the fire service is guided by, by national standards. And they have, of course, the National Fire Protecting Association, OSHA, things like that. I listed a number of standards that the NFPA addresses. You can see they have chapters that cover volunteer fire departments, wildland firefighting, rural water supplies, emergency service communications, trainings, reports, health and safety, incident management, you know, wildland firefighting apparatus. I just pulled these out of the table of contents, because they relate directly to, to volunteer departments and what they're doing. These are consensus-based standards, they do not have the enforcement of law. NFPA standards ironically are developed after something bad happens, okay? You go to McDonald's or some other place for a cup of coffee now, what does it say on the coffee cup? Caution, hot contents, right? Like we didn't know. But it's on there, and that was put on after, of course, someone got burned and something bad happened. When a firefighter was killed during live-fire training, fire chiefs across the country got together, went to the NFPA and said, "You know what? We need a standard to prevent firefighters from getting killed during, during training burns." So they developed a standard that is specifically addressed to that, but it's only after something bad happened. So when you look at a lot of these standards, they're gonna contain guidelines and suggestions that are based on real-life scenarios where bad stuff has happened. If any of these standards, then, as I mentioned, are adopted by reference, then they do become enforceable as law. Much is the same with OSHA, there, it's relatively reactive standard, but they do have some proactive ways to try and make the workplace safer in doing that. But they're both very strong standards in the industry. The same thing, as I mentioned, with OSHA, you've got respiratory protection standards, hazardous materials, personal protective equipment, that while they are primarily used in the private sector, in the public sector, you have public employees that are doing much of the same work or in similar environments, that need the same type of training and guidance and equipment that are in the private sector. Then there are things called industry best practices. They aren't necessarily standards or codes, but they're, they are books, education materials, items that are put together based on experiences and best practices noted by successful and progressive fire departments across the country, both career and volunteer. You've got the International Fire Service Training Association, which many of the technical colleges use as basis for their coursework constructions. You have the National Volunteer Fire Council out of Maryland, Fire and Rescue, known as MIFRI. They also have standards and training materials that are, are available to, to fire departments across the country. Then you add the federal government part with the U.S. Fire Administration. There's the National Fire Academy, which provides coursework on, it was on campus out in Emmitsburg, Maryland, where they bring in experts from across the country and teach a myriad of courses that are germane to the fire service, both volunteer and career. And there are a ton of network, networking opportunities. Just one example is the Kansas State Firefighters Association. There's also the Wisconsin State Firefighters Association. Wisconsin State Firefighters, there's career, and there's volunteers. Fire service professionals from across the state get together to, to work on issues and improve that area. So now locally, you've got your Reno County Fire District System. Obviously, it's long-established, pretty much so it's limited to fire and rescue, as the city of Hutchinson provides a hasmat technical rescue needs. The districts still provide first response service calls to just about all calls, and as far as I'm aware, there's no minimum training or requirements for any of the firefighters in any of the districts. So you, again, as a Board of County Commissioners, are the governing bodies. There is autonomy within the fire district management. Right now, there's a lot of autonomy with how the districts are run. At some point, they can be autonomous, but autonomous, but are, should still be under the direction of the commission, and there should be a common goals and set out to what you're going to do. Again, this has caused concerns dating, dating back to the eighties, probably, you know, which we demonstrated with that memo. And many of the old concerns continue in 2021, and new concerns have developed as a result of the best practices evolving over time, but again, that's, that's where we're at. I mentioned this study, which I'm presenting you here today, it was to obtain a third-party expert opinion and provide some guidance to you, the board. So what I did is, this, this study consisted of three major points. I started out with a written survey of all the fire district chiefs to get some groundwork, basis of information. Came out last year and did a site visit, I interviewed key stakeholders, spoke with, went to each of the fire districts, spoke with them. I was able to observe some of the operational practices. I actually shadowed on a couple of fire calls that were in the county, and then I was post-site visit research and reports. I got phone calls after I got home from, from some folks down here saying, "Hey, I wanted to add this information, hey, I wanted that, add that information." Just from these three points alone of the work within the study, I, I could have given you probably twenty pages worth of notes, at least, of the information I got, and tried to sift through that and recognize that some of them are emotional responses, some have factual base. But a lot of information, people were really willing to, to express what they want. And then when I got home, you know, a few months after I got home, putting some of this together, even up to several months, I would get a call, and I, I would talk to Adam, or I'd get a call from someone out there who had my number, and I'd go back and say, "Oh, I didn't hear that when I was out there, really? I didn't know that was a situation." So information kept coming in, and this report evolved over, over the time. So the fire service is really, it's a business as much as a protective service, and any of you involved with, with the county finances, understand that the local government and service providers, it's a business as well. You have to plan, organize the direction of your activities, you have to budget, you have to have purchasing policies, you have to have fiscal forecasting to create a fire department budget. You know, you need to have reports coming, and you need to be gathering information. Eighty percent of my work as a fire chief back home was personnel management. I joked once I went to human resource manager, I said, "If, if this, if so much of my, my job is gonna be dealing with personnel and HR issues, I want your paycheck, you know?" So you, you definitely have to have personnel management skills, you need to know how to do performance evaluations, you need how to relate to people, to get people motivated to improve, to guide them in a way that they aren't offended, but, but embrace the information they're getting. And probably one of the most important things is you have to be part and understand the process of strategic planning, because we're in an ever-changing environment on that. So if you look specifically at the protective services, the components like the fire department, we do risk analysis. we do risk analysis, we pre-plan. We figure out what bad stuff is in our district that we have to be prepared for. Because if you don't know that methyl ethyl death is being transported through your district and you give dispatch to an accident where methyl ethyl death is being leaked and you aren't aware of it, that's where bad stuff happens. That's where people get injured and killed. You have to understand the personal protective, the equipment, the inspections, how you maintain it, how to use it, where it's, it's more important to have. You have to understand the importance of response times and how your response system gets the most effective response possible. I looked at response times information I got through the 911 center and saw that in some cases, response times are similar between, say, the Hutch Fire Department Municipal, what they can do in an area, and the fire district. So while the response times are similar, that data can be, can be misleading. For example, when the city fire department goes on scene within six minutes, even if it's an extended response, they are on scene with a fully staffed and equipped piece of apparatus that can go into action immediately to mitigate the situation. A volunteer organization may be going, and you could get an apparatus with just a driver saying, "I'm on the scene." You could get two people, you could get three people, or you might get somebody in their personal vehicle who heard the call, responded out there and is radioing in there on the scene. What can they do? What can one person without any equipment do? They can do a size up and provide valuable information for the other responding units, is true. But one person with the fire truck could eventually get the pumping gear, start pouring water on it, but it's not going to be an effective response. So when you look at response time, minutes are deceiving. You have to look at, is it an effective response or not? Can you get something done? Are you going to end up calling the cavalry in within a half an hour and having an hours, hours response because the resources took a while to get in there? So if you are approaching response times, make sure you ask for some additional information to clarify that. The other things that make it a business is you need to have the fire service use standard operational guidelines. Private sector may use policies and procedures. I mean, there is a right way to do things and a wrong way to do things, safe and unsafe. And sometimes, because we're in such dynamic changing situations with fire service, you have to have the ability to adapt, to maybe go outside the lines a little bit here to get this done, or go that way to get that done. That's why we call them standard operational guidelines. People in the fire service, firefighters or officers reacting to a situation. I always figured, I've got sharp people out there with a good head on their shoulders. And if they deviate from what we normally do, they got to have a good reason. And I'm going to back them up. But I do expect them to come in and give me a good reason why they deviated from those operational guidelines. Where you don't have operational guidelines, you have chaos. You have what we call freelancing. People doing what they want because they think it's the right thing at that particular moment. Then you have after-action reports and analysis. Some of the best lessons learned are when you review what happened afterwards. And you see that happening all the time. Just turn on the news, you see the incidents that are happening. And law enforcement, fire EMS, we're always getting together and saying, "How did this go? How can we do it better next time?" A lot of fire departments, not just in Reno County, but back in my home state of Wisconsin, do not take the time to sit down and talk about it. A lot of them are afraid to self-criticize. And a lot of them are afraid to learn from, from the doom. You know, some are afraid that if what they did or didn't do got out, that it would be embarrassing for them. But we don't get progress unless we review how we act and try to improve. And that's all part of the culture and the environment about how you're going to move forward to do these kind of things in a positive manner. Then you have performance improvement planning, and then again, strategic planning. So it, it is a business, okay? So that survey, as I mentioned, I sent out. I won't go into each of these. I'm just kind of show you some of the topics we talked about within the service with the chiefs, okay? And out of that drew some, some general, some general outcomes of, of what's happening. What I'm finding is a number of the districts are not only experiencing the same challenges, but I can tell you, fire departments across the country are experiencing a lot of the same challenges you are here. Volunteer departments back in Wisconsin have recruitment and retention issues. They have training issues. They have personnel issues. You're, you're not alone. And what this did is reinforce to me that Reno County has, has the same issues that the others. You may have them to a different degree, you know, but you're, you're not different than anyone else. So I want to share with you just some of the comments that came from my interviews and the surveys against so you have an idea of where some of the perspectives I'm going to provide come from. So one of the chiefs I, I interviewed came back and he said, "We are one county, but we're entirely different fire districts." You know, and that, others were saying, one of the chiefs said about another fire district. I asked him, I said, "Do you work together with them? Do you guys do things together?" whatever. And the chief basically said, "No. It's, it's their fire district's game. They can do anything they want. I just let on my business what they do next door." Okay? In reality, in reality, it is, it is your business. If you're going to respond there on a mutual aid or an automatic aid-type response or anything, you're going into somebody else's sandbox. You have to understand how the game is being played and what's going on in order to do it safely. And you should be working with your neighbors to anticipate what they can provide and how you work together. And that, that you have two systems that at least can work similarly in, in the same crisis situation in a call. So, you know, while some districts should do anything they want, it is important that people understand what's going on and work together in, with the common goal. There's a vast difference in the way districts do things, I was told. Some do their own thing without including the fire board in the process. And I'm, I substitute fire board for the Board of County Commissioners, just for ease on that. Some felt the bureaucracy of the current system is really cumbersome, that they couldn't get things done the way they wanted to. Some consider their district isolated from others, falling behind. You know, nobody really cares what goes on out here. We're in, we're in the boonies. Some of the, and it wasn't all just fire chiefs I spoke to. There were other chief officers and some firefighters sought me out. One of the comments was that the technology that's out there is over the head of most of the fire chiefs. And they're unwilling to pay for it or incorporate it into their operations. They're not familiar with it, and they just aren't going to do it, which, which impedes progress. And there's disparities in leadership vision. Some want to do more and others want to maintain the status quo. I found that in speaking with some of the chiefs, there's low level of understanding about what it takes to be a fire chief throughout the system. Some of that's demonstrated by actions or lack of actions. I had one chief tell me, "I'd love to do what you have on the job description. I think that's great, but I don't know how to do it. And nobody's here to, nobody can train me on how to do it." So I got this job description, but I, I don't know what to do. They, they want to work. Some of the departments were said to not promote training. One firefighter got ahold of me and he said, "I tried to get training through my district, tried and tried, and they wouldn't do it. Finally, I, I dug into my own pocket, went over to the tech school, paid for the class myself because I needed, I need this information." One of the comments was, "A lot of the guys sit around and BS after the meeting. It's a fraternal organization." And it is. I grew up in a fire station. It is a fraternity. You know, it go of male and female firefighters. But it's a, it's a fraternal organization that has a social aspect after the work is done and the training is completed. There are some fire departments where the fraternal portion of the job is more important than the job itself. And I can say that is, is, is the universal truth across the country. One of the firefighters said, "People like being part of something that's done right." He said, "You give us good equipment, good training and a good system, and we will do good work for you." Another comment was, "The county's dabbles in the managing the fire districts." You know, friendships and politics impact what goes on there. The county needs to either be all-in or all-out, you know, or not in it at all. They, they need to be all-in or not in it at all. And doing what needs to be done as a chief, I was told, would take 30 to 40 hours a month. And quite honestly, he said, "I'm not paid enough for that amount of work." So you look at everything. And, and you look at the, the job description that's out there, that's, that's work. You know, if you're going to do it right. You know, some volunteers and I know chiefs, they do it for, for the love of the work. You know, and the others love the work, but when you're paid a buck two fifty an hour and expect all of this out of it, it isn't so much the money as a message that it sends as well. So that's a challenge that's, that's out there. When I asked them, "What's the ability of the fire districts to work together?" The general response I received is, "It's kind of middle of the road." Continuity is rated out of six out of 10, which I was kind of glad to see. I was afraid it was going to be, you know, less than five. So at least, you know, there's a six out of the 10, felt the continuity was there, but everybody felt there's room for significant improvement. The district's expectations for continuity and mutual expectations drifted apart because of differing opinions and not wanting to anger anyone. So over the course of decades, you had a situation where we used to do something and then we quit doing it, and it got a little softer down the road. And the softness became the new standard. And then nothing really happened, even though the things were talked about. So it got a little softer again. And pretty soon, the standard went from here down to here over the course of time. And when nobody steps in to make a change, people become content with the new normal, even though it's subpar. And a lot of times, it did that because there's been a fair amount of conflict avoidance in the system over the decades. And political influence that contributes to conflict avoidance. And again, you don't just find that here, you find it everywhere in doing that. So it kind of resulted in a do what you want situation. Some of the things hung on where they had to come to the board to get permission to, to purchase a fire apparatus or something major or things over $5,000. But really, that's the only true interaction. My understanding was that the board kind of developed into its fiscal and everything else was kind of left to run, you know, on their own down there. And part of the problem is when there's no complaining, when things aren't brought to light and discussed and put on the table, progress is held back because things look good from the outside. When something bad happens, people take a closer look and say, "How in the world could this have happened? Everything looked like it was just fine from the outside." So some common, although not universal perspectives, is there are people that I interviewed that'd like to see standardized equipment, such as interchangeable SCV eight tanks. So when you get on a scene, if one particular department is knee-deep in something and they run out of equipment, they can grab something from another district and they're the same, and you know they can be used together. Lot of different brand names out there, a lot of different types. Sometimes standardization is good in a focused area. A need for standards for apparatus and years of service policy. I discussed to one fire board in Wisconsin. I was addressing, the chief called me, said, "I can't get any equipment. Their stuff is, you know, bad." And I talked to the fire board and they had like a 30-year-old pumper that dated back to, you know, at that time, 1980, in the 1980s, which was pre-apparatus, NFPA apparatus standards, where they say, "These safety features need to be built in the apparatus." And that particular fire board said, "Yeah, it's an old truck. But you know what? It's only got 2,500 hours on it. We change the oil every six months religiously. It's got water and a hose bed on it. That truck is good to go." And it didn't have any of the safety standards of current apparatus. It had 750 gallons of water and a 750 gallon per minute pump. When apparatus today carry several thousand gallons of water and can pump over 1,000 gallons a minute. So, you know, there are, there are organizations out there that say, "What we've got is good enough and we can't afford anything new." Well, again, there's standards out there that can help guide, and a good strategic plan to achieve that can help move you towards that. Other comments were, "In mutual aid situations, firefighters or task force responding will find the scene unorganized." I had one task force member come in and tell me, "I came to this large wildland fire that was very expansive. I was looking for command. And the commander was over in one corner of the fire, putting all of his attention on putting this part of the fire out. And the rest of it was going wild." And I said, "Well, what did you do?" And he said, "I couldn't get ahold of command." He said, "So I took over. I took command. And I started directing all of the other resources. And that original chief that was there, that was command, let me go. He didn't want anything to do with it, so he took over. And we organized the scene the way it should be." Others have said that, "I send my firefighters into this district or that district. I will not send them without one of my officers to watch over them because I do not have the confidence that they will not get lost, injured, or, you know, pulled into a chaotic situation." He says, "So I make sure I watch over my people and we take care of those." Other comments were, "There should be an organized approach to purchasing to save the district's money, provide more consistency in equipment." Surprisingly, a number of folks felt that a common administration effort would benefit the districts instead of individually run fire districts. I heard that several times. You probably read that in the report how that comes out. There was talk about a county fire chief. And I didn't ask the question, but it came up originally. And one said, "We need one county fire chief to provide consistency over the problem, alleviate the disputes between, between the districts and, and help smooth things out and get things organized so we are, we are a fire department with more commonalities than individualities." And that came out more than once on that. And it did come out that there, they felt that there's been a poor relationship over the fire board over the years, which has held progress back. They would like to see a better, a better relationship with the fire board. Some of the outcomes in terms of operational I observed through the surveys and that is half or fewer of half of the calls have sufficient staffing and responding. In other words, over 50% of the times, these engines leave the barns, they aren't staffed enough to take care of the situation they're responding to. There are some SOGs out there. Some are very limited in what they'll do, very limited in existence. There's a limited understanding and use of the incident command system. The incident command system began in the military, kind of had its genesis in the fire service in the eighties out in, in the West and the progressive areas like Phoenix and California and that. And it worked its way to the East. And I began being introduced to it in the mid-eighties at home. And now it's standard across the fire service. And there are ICS 100, 200, 300 courses. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a complex system that can take care of very small generic incidences where you don't need a whole lot of structure to, you can bet, you should see the incident command structure for Hurricane Katrina or something like that. I mean, it's, it's quite comprehensive. Here, I'm, I would say that the fire departments know just enough about the incident command system that they use a rudimentary structure. But it is never pulled together to the extent that it could be and utilized the way it should be. If somebody from outside came in and said, "Do you use the ICS system here?" They could honestly say, "Yes, we do." And they wouldn't be lying. But it's not near, it's, it's not near the level of expertise or competency that it could be. And part of the reason I think things like ICS is used here is because it's practically forced on departments. It is so universally accepted that even those departments that are the most resistant to change heal to and given to using the ICS and some of the terminology because at, at least as far as that goes, you'll get steamrolled if you don't use it. So it's a reluctant acceptance of some of that progress. I believe there's an over-reliance on sources from other fire districts, what I pulled out from the interviews and my observations. In other words, there's not a lot of motivation to improve some of the services. And one example is, your dispatch procedures allow for up to three dispatches with gaps of time between two and three minutes per dispatch, where there can be absolutely nothing happening. There can be a dispatch for a fire and there's no response. Dispatch, no response. Dispatch, no response. So for upwards of 10 minutes, there can be dead airspace where nobody knows what's going on before the fourth dispatch comes in and says, "Okay, I better do something. I'll send somebody else." Okay? Fire doubles in size every minute, okay? You've just given that fire an opportunity to double over 100% in waiting for a dispatch to get out. And that's before a wheel starts rolling. Imagine you were at home and your house was on, on fire, discovered fire, and you called 911. And you were listening to a scanner and you heard that dispatch go off. And then you heard absolutely nothing for nine minutes, 10 minutes. Would you kind of be going crazy, going, "What is going on here?" And then 10 minutes later, you hear, "Engine so-and-so responding." You know, I, I have to admit, I was floored when I saw that system. And I saw it in act- You know, I, I have to admit, I was floored when I saw that system, and I saw it in action. Okay? And I saw the chief sitting there, holding the radio, waiting and waiting and going through multiple dispatches. And inside, I was screaming, say something! Tell them you have the call, and you're trying to get your crew together. Let them know that people aren't dead out here. Okay? But, but there was nothing. And, and so, people that work within the system and maintain their wits, I really, I commend, because it was really tough for me, for me to watch. Now, there are systems out there. Back home, we call it, I am responding. Here, they call it active 911. And what firefighters do is, they take their phone, they pull up their app, and when the old call comes in, they acknowledge the call on their phone. And they say, I'm coming, I'm not available, you know, however that works in their system. So the fire chief can look and go, oh, look at that, I got three guys, they don't have radios, they got pagers, but I know they're coming. And then the chief knows what's happening and going on, and they can prepare, and he can, and he can respond. You know, he could say, you know, district so-and-so, we're, we're getting our truck together, we anticipate being out the doors in two minutes or something, just so people know what's going on. The problem is, not everybody uses that app on their phone. It's out there. Not everybody has a radio. And there's pros and cons about how many portable radios there should be out there and who should have them, because some people just love talking about them. But there's no way of acknowledging what's, what's going on if you're not using that app. And when I asked the chief, I said, well, they got the app, why don't they use it? The response I got was, well, hell, sometimes I don't even use it. There wasn't any justification. The chief just admitted that he was as complicit as the others, and not using a resource that was purchased and put out there for folks to use. So that's where, you know, having a standard operating guideline for responses, you know, things like that come into, come into place. And that system of dispatching upon a fourth page, some of those districts also, they say, well, you know what? We can't do it, somebody else will take up the slack. And they know it'll happen, because it's built in the system. So there's no real motivation to improve it. One fire district acknowledged, when they hear a fire going off in another district, they automatically have their firefighters report to their station, even though it's not their area, because they know they're going to be going. Because the other district relies so heavily on them, rather than taking care of business at home. Okay? And that's an expense to the folks in the other districts. It isn't fair to subsidize one district at the expense of another. There's got to be an equal commitment to reciprocity and, and working together on that. People saw safety compromising actions happening that didn't have to. Some have concerns over the age of the equipment, the apparatus, the condition of it. There was an instance where the batteries on the apparatus were dead, they wouldn't start. A firefighter called the chief, said, I need, I need to go buy this stuff. Chief said, no, we haven't got the ma, you know, haven't got the money, put, put a charger on it, we're not going to do it. Those batteries are dead, it just would not work. So they called emergency management, says, what do we do? We can't get our truck started, we don't have any batteries. And they said, go get a battery, we'll cover it. You know? The fact that somebody has to go behind their, their fire chief's back to get something done is, is really inappropriate, you know, totally. Other ones in terms of equipment and that, the fiscal portion of it, I can give you one other example. I'm told that the timesheets, the invoices that the county pays on behalf of the districts aren't turned in on a timely basis, they can be months behind. I heard of one instance where a fire department called a vendor for fuel or something like that to bring it, and the vendor said, no, ain't coming. What do you mean, you're not coming? You haven't paid your bills, you're cut off. Fire districts cut off because they haven't paid their bills. Okay? And this is a public safety, business being run, and those types of things, you know, have occurred over the past. I have fire stations that are in need of maintenance and/or replacement. I went to one, one fire station in District 7, or 6, on the far side, you could barely squeeze between the apparatus, it's an old car dealership, you know. You can hardly walk between them. If you needed a piece of apparatus that's in the back of the bay, it would take 15, 20 minutes to get everything else out of the way, so you can get that apparatus out on, on the road. Your, your districts are making do with very little, and, and they are making it work, but it's just a matter of time before it's going to hit the crisis point, where you'll be managing by crisis instead of by a proactive mode, because things are going to hit a point where it just isn't going to happen. Kind of like when equipment hits its end of service life. You can keep, hold on to radios as long as you want, and you can charge them and turn them on, but once the technology is out of date and the company offers no more support, it's kind of like your old Windows Vista operating system, you know? You work till it breaks, and then you're, you're done. That happens with equipment and buildings as well, as I'm sure you're aware of. Some feel the locations of the fire stations aren't necessarily locative or conducive to effective responses. How fire stations got to where they are, I don't know. There were some political implications, there were some fiscal implications, they are where they are. You know, there's some areas where two fire stations from different fire districts are relatively close together, but they can't go across the border to each other to help. One district said they could watch and see a fire going on across the highway, but technically they aren't allowed to respond because it's not their district, and they can't go on mutual aid until it's requested by the other district. So, you know, there are some situations where you scratch your head. And I've always said in the past, because we dealt with city limits and different limits and restrictions, and, you know, my comment was, when questioned about it, is turf kills. There's no choice about it, turf and politics kill. And you have to find a way to get through that to do what's in the best interest of the public. Okay? And we mentioned about the incident command some. So overall, what I've seen in the past five years, the call volume of Reno County is relatively steady, in some instances, even a slight decrease in calls. Funding is larger in more urbanized districts, in those districts, they feel it's adequate. Those that feel they're underfunded feel very strongly about it. I've heard some say, you know what, we get 20% of maybe what the other districts get. But if somebody from that, that district that has a lot happens to be traveling through my district, and they need the fire department, they expect me to come and do the same thing there to happen, to help them, that their home district provides, and they say, I can't do that. I don't have the minimum level of stuff that I need to treat them the way they would be treated elsewhere. So there's the old adage, I used to teach first responder and EMS, the instructors would get together at a conference, and we'd sit there and say, well, where should we be careful where we travel through? You know? Because you knew where there was good service and where there wasn't service. And they would say, whatever you do, don't get in an accident or a crash in this area, because you'll be there a long time and you'll be hurt. The same thing can be said for some of the districts, if you want to say, you want to be careful where you have an emergency in the county, because there's areas that, that are better prepared than others. And while that will always be a universal truth, there should be some basic level of preparedness and a standard, that you can provide the same level of care throughout the county with what you, you know, you're doing. Training was notably more absent than present. Some people really excited and wanted training, others said, no, it's a necessary evil, others said, we really don't have time for it. There really isn't any structure to the program. It's based on what the current interests or desires are. So a district will get together, and someone will say, well, what do you want to train on? I don't know, what do you want to train on? You know, there's no structure to go through, say, the IFs, the training book, and the skills that firefighters that go through firefighter one training, when they test out, there's practical skills, there's no organized effort to ensure that those basic practical skills are maintained or improved. You know, the tech college does its best to offer classes, but if nobody replies or comes to it, then it, it isn't going to happen. But just in general, training is, is more notably absent than, than present. And there really aren't any training officers, and there aren't much training records to say what they've done or what they're doing. Again, a lot of times, it's the rookie who's going to be designated as the training officer. Some of the other outcomes, there's, as mentioned, there's a little fire incident reporting. There is the Kansas Fire Incident Reporting System, CAFERS, which is similar based on the National Fire Incident Reporting System, NIFERS, which is accepted across the country. Kansas, you use the, the CAFERS system to report it. The state looks at the material and then forwards it on to NIFERS. And, but together, they come up with the, the data that is needed to help fire departments plan and move forward. The participation in CAFERS is state mandated and requires all fire departments to submit monthly. I can tell you, in half, 50% of the cases, that's not happening here. To my knowledge, there hasn't been any repercussions, nobody has come out and, you know, said, oh, we're going to fine you for not doing it, we're doing this and that. But again, eventually, information abhors a vacuum, and eventually, someone's going to come out and see that they haven't been reporting for all these years, and the hammer's going to come down to the extent where someone's going to say, start doing what you're supposed to have been doing for years, and doing it. You, here's one of the differences between the municipal and the volunteers, is you'll find most municipal departments do this religiously. It's just part of what they do. Some of the other outcomes, the response practices, there's a lack of standardization, as we mentioned, on knowing who's going to be responding. We talked about active 911. A comment was, it's a fight to get mutual aid quickly when it's needed, and that extended response time when there isn't any acknowledgement. Some of the purchasing practices, there really isn't an understanding or the rationale behind the policy. Sometimes the board has had some solid reasons for adjusting purchases the way they have with the districts, but there's been very little communication about it. You know, I mentioned the chiefs last night, if you don't like what the decision the board wants to do versus what you want to do, why don't you sit down together, talk about it? Give your reasons, listen to theirs, come to a compromise. But the way it appears to be now, is they make their case, the board will say, that doesn't seem to make fiscal sense, we're going to do this anyway, and that's the way it's done. And if the board is right, they're right. If, if, if the, the chiefs are right, they feel they aren't listened to. So there needs to be more communication between those two to understanding the purchasing policy. You've got a county-wide policy, if anything, over $5,000 purchase needs to be approved by, by the next level up. You know, firefighters are, are sharp and creative people, and, you know, they'll go out there and they'll make two purchases of $4,999, individual purchases, to avoid having to deal with that $5,000 mark. So these practices, as well-intended as they are, are being subverted. Okay? And you're not getting the result that, that you intended to get. So the purchasing needs to be looked at in a system to make sure that that continues to run smoothly as occurring. So here's my analysis of the outcome, as stated in the report. There, there's a lot of internal conflict. People have different perspectives, people grown up in different cultures. There, there's a lot of internal conflict. And there's a lot of conflict avoidance going on. Purchasing practices aren't being properly followed, and they continue, they continue to create frustrations on multiple levels. Some of the requests don't appear to be supportive for justifications or a plan for use. You know, the chiefs aren't coming in and selling you on why they want what they want, and how they've been prepared to get it. At times, the commission hasn't given justifications for why they've told the chiefs what they're going to do, other than it's the prudent thing to do. There's no real overall sense of urgency towards training, policies, firefighter safety, taking into consideration best practices, including management practices. The fire chiefs don't agree with the state statute that references automatic aid and reciprocity. There's a notable desire for central leadership and a coordinated management and response So what are the goals? Improved service, better cost-benefit effectiveness, you want a faster response time, you want all of them, you want better relationships, you know? How, how do you achieve that? You look at the report and it's like, oh my gosh, you know, how do we eat this elephant? We eat it one, one bite at a time, for internal accountability of leadership. The chiefs, you know, you create a strategic plan, you have specific strategic goals, you have administrative goals for to improve business practices, budgeting, human resource, operation. You know, none of this is, is anything new to you that have been involved in business and know what you need to do if you want to keep the doors open. Same thing goes with the fire service, the public safety, the difference is, it's tougher to close the doors, because you've got the taxpayer's pocket that's paying for it. You make sure you don't go out of business personally, but here, shortcomings can happen for a long time in the public sector, because it's got the sustainability of the tax base. So one of the other options then is, is if, if they don't create it internally, is you look for an external way, a different system to make these things happen. And I bring up the dirty word consolidation. You know, in public safety, law enforcement, fire, whatever you do, whenever you talk about consolidation, the defensive arms go up right away. You know, I, I don't care what, what branch you're talking about. But consolidation does have its benefits. Out of many, you get into one, you create one fire district. There's a way to do it, statute provides a path to do it. Why would you want to do that? Well, if you had one fire district, you would, you could have it led by one professional fire chief or a coordinator, someone who understands all of the leadership things and all of the management practices that needs to run good fire department business, and can help guide and coordinate and put an action plan together. You get an individual with some good charismatic leadership and organizational skills to help pull this off, because in any organization, there is resistance to change, and you have to have a strong and charismatic leader, who's willing to stand up to that resistance and work their way through it, and shoot for a win-win situation. You need someone who understands the NFPA, OSHA standards, the best practices, and how they're critical to incorporate into your, your business plan. You need someone experienced in budgeting and fiscal planning, someone that can come into the, to the county administrator and, and talk at the same level, understanding the same things, much like the fire chief goes in and talks to the finance director. You know, they both have their expertises, and they sometimes clash, but they have to find a way to talk on the same level to problem solve these things. You need someone who believes in training, someone who wants to build positive working relationships, someone to facilitate a continuous improvement effort. That, that can happen when you have a leader over them. Now, in terms of specific, this, this individual would report to the appropriate chain of command person, depending on what it's based on. If it's a department-level position, that would report directly to the county administrator, that would be one. If it is more of a division-level coordinator, that would work and report, say, under emergency management, there's, there's another possibility. What consolidation also does is it nullifies any of the concerns about borders that the state law restricts in terms of automatic aid. You could still have your district outlines like they are now, or you could potentially redraw them into different response areas to make where your fire stations are a more effective response. But you would still have different response areas or, or sub-districts under the primary fire district. As I told the chiefs last night, a number of fire chiefs I've dealt with over the years are afraid of losing their title. Okay? I used to be a fire chief, and they changed everything, now I'm not, and many of them would see it as a sign of failure, you know, a career failure, when in reality, something like this makes them part of something greater. Each individual sub-district is still going to be managed, is still going to have a fire station, is still going to have the same type of needs within that area that the larger district is experiencing overall, and each individual district is going to need that type of a leader in that area, in their community, to keep that viable and going. Okay? So there is a strong need for leadership, and if this were to happen and they were to be on, they would simply be playing a similar role, what they have now, might be a different name, a different title, under a different system, but it wouldn't change what they do, or their status in the community, or what needs to happen. So it isn't the end of the world, and you're not destroying a district, or its history, or its, its heritage. So another option then to supplement this, and this goes beyond the primary recommendations, is you have another resource available to you. And again, this is not a new concept and idea, I brought it up before, I brought it up in my home district. Back in Eau Claire County in Wisconsin, 80% of the county population lives within six miles of the city. Okay? The same here with, with Reno County. If you look on, towards the back of the page, the attachment five, has partial location... If you look on, towards the back of the page, the attachment five has partial locations, valuation protected, and travel times. You'll see in that information that I obtained through the, probably that 91% of the Reno County's population lives 20 minutes or less within the city limits. Of the parcels that are out there, you've got 83% of all the parcels in the county with a combined valuation of $3 billion. 94% of the combined valuation of the properties in Reno County live within under 20 minutes of the city limits. The Hutchfire Department has stations located such that they could respond out to these areas where you have the highest population base, the greatest dollar value of parcels within the county. And they can put a fully staffed and equipped piece of apparatus on the scene in the same time that one of the volunteer districts can get on scene. So while the times themselves may be similar, you have to look again at what you're bringing to the table. They're bringing in a fully staffed, ready-to-go engine that can get water onto a fire quickly versus you're not sure if you're going to have an engine with one person, two people, if you're going to have somebody with a private vehicle. So you have to be careful about how you're going to do that. I can only speak from my experiences back home, is that I took calls as a fire chief from people that lived just outside city limits saying, "I lost my house and I can see the fire station down the road. How could that happen?" And again, "I'm sorry, you're not in our fire district. We're not authorized to respond out there." Okay? Turf kills. And that was the way it was for years. Then, as I was nearing my retirement, a funny thing happened. A dispatch went out to our volunteer corps. And don't get me wrong, we have an excellent volunteer township fire department out there. But circumstances change with each call and, you know, with each incident. A dispatch went out and nobody responded. Nobody responded for like three or four minutes, you know, and the dispatch, "Did you get the call? Yep, yep, working on it." About five minutes later, the township chief came back and said, "Could you dispatch the city to get there first?" And so we did. And so with our four-minute response time, combined by the four- or five-minute delay in response, we got on scene in about nine minutes. And that first-in-the-engine company put the fire out before the volunteer truck got there, or as a volunteer truck got there. Had we not been there to do that, with, with the rate that fire size doubles, that could have been a fully engulfed apartment fire, or at least several apartments would have been lost, where people would have lost their homes. So it hasn't changed the system dramatically back there. There was a time when the adjacent city that had a volunteer department needed mutual aid, would call every volunteer department around them before they would call us to help. And we could have been there in four minutes, you know, and you scratch your head going, "Why?" And part of it was the fear that if people saw that the city could get out there and put the fire out faster, that their fire department would cease to exist. And I talked to one of the officers on the departments and said, "Why would I want to come in and take over your fire department and destroy 150-year tradition? You've got a great fire department, you've got great firefighters, you're in a different sitting, you're a volunteer, you can't always get stuff there as quickly as we can, and we're right next door and we're willing to help." We come in, we take initial size of command, get the information there. As soon as the volunteer unit gets on scene or their chief gets on scene, we pass command. This is your scene, we subjugate ourselves to that command and we work for them. Or we back out and then their folks come in and take over. Too often, this type of a concept is seen as an invasion rather than, rather than just help. And I think if you talk to any people that live in these urbanized areas adjacent but are outside city limits, and they had a crisis or emergency, be it fire or medical, you know, particularly when your brain dies within six to 10 minutes, a lack of oxygen, if you were to go to these people and say, "We can get you someone here in four minutes if we change the system to make it happen." I, I challenge you to take a survey or referendum or poll and see how many of those people would say, "No, thanks. We'll wait for our people." Okay? It's, it's not human nature. But again, it's, it's politics and the turfs and the finances. This can work wonderfully, but it has to be approached, it has to be negotiated, it has to be understood, it has to be bought in by both sides because you are using resources from another area as well. But it can work. And when you look at the number of structure fires, if you look through the, the stats where this may be coming into play, you're not going to be taking 20, 30% of, of the calls away. I mean, I looked at some of the stats, in one of the districts, there were 15 structure fires in a year. And a structure fire can be a wastepaper basket fire in a, in a room, a room and contents, or it can be a fully involved, you know, commercial business fire. Structure has, has a wide definition on it. But there were 15 structure fires that the city probably would have responded to in those few minutes. So it, it's not a daily occurrence. You can sit there and define, here are the conditions that are the most critical, we get somebody there the fastest, define the parameters of something like this, and you would probably see a significant decrease in fire loss and a potential increase in life safety. Again, I'm throwing it out there to say, to me, it's at least worth a discussion. You know, the city may be end up being against it. The preliminary indications that I received was that Hutchfire would be willing to sit down and talk about it because they go out on special rescues and hazmat anyway. You just have to see if it works. But to say you've got this wonderful ISO 1 rated system adjacent to a district to say that that isn't a resource that could have a positive impact without looking at it, to me, you're not doing due diligence to at least talk about it. So, you know, you, you combine that, where you have the greatest population and property density, you look at the fire districts where you have improved training, equipment, effective responses, and you've got a win-win situation where you've got a group of, of career professionals with a group of volunteer professionals, both wanting to do more understanding, there's challenges that go along with doing that, and working together to, to get to a, a level that, that people are comfortable with and proud of. Now, the definition of success isn't necessarily just achieving a goal. The definition of success is continuous step-by-step movement towards the attainment of the goal. And if you do that here with the fire districts and put together a, a three-to-five-year plan and beyond, and you take these steps towards that, then you're in good shape. Oftentimes, if there's an OSHA violation or other standard violation, they'll come in and some things you have to fix right away because the equipment has to be guarded so you don't lose a hand or arm. Other things take more time. And our position has always been, and when I was chief, that if we have a plan to achieve this goal in terms of training, expertise, response capability, purchasing of equipment, if I can demonstrate that we are going to do these things and each year it's getting better, and here's where we're going to make it, the regulator is going to come in and say, "That's good. You're on the path, you're doing the right thing. You don't have to be there, but I can see that you're going to get there." And that, I think, would be the goal here, is to not wave a magic wand and change everything, but to put a plan together where there's a consistent movement towards that goal. So in summary, and as I told the chiefs last night, this is a big pie to slice. There's, there's plenty of reasons why these concerns have occurred over the last decades. If you want to put it bluntly, there's plenty of blame to share. There's fire districts that let things go and didn't do some things. Historically, there have been some fiscal concerns with things that, that may have happened early on that weren't appropriate. There have been fire boards that, that really haven't paid attention to the fire service, perhaps to get the attention it deserves as a public safety entity. You know, there, I've been told there's plans out there for blueprints, there's this that have all been put aside because other projects have come around that have taken priority and bumped it. But rather than work these, these priorities in and making, you know, get this jigsaw puzzle pulled together, you know, the, the board has chosen to focus energies on a specific area, and then this one just kind of goes by the wayside. So what I'm saying is you all have a tough job. You have to keep the wheels going in a lot of different areas. You have to give attention to a lot of different areas to keep things going, but you also have a lot of support out there that's waiting to step in and under your leadership, make these kind of things occur. And I think you're in a great position to do that. And based on my experience with this project and my discussions with the fire chief, I think you've got a great springboard to move forward with, if that's the direction that you want to go. Okay, I've wore your years off long enough. I'm certainly open to any responses or questions or concerns.
I'll start one thing. I, I appreciate very much, and I think we all do, and everyone involved in, in emergency management and the fire safety of the county, appreciate the idea that Randy brought to us to do a study so we could find out some things. And I think your expertise and knowledge and history of, of where you've been added a great deal to this. One question, I think maybe even Chief White can, can help answer, is regarding training. Are there online courses that firefighters can take, available through the Fire Force System, that will help them time-wise, that they can do this online, some of it? Is that, is that something that, because most of the volunteers out there, as you know, you do, are, are, got a lot on their plate besides their volunteering for this? And are there some online courses that are available that can be utilized to get some training, education-wise?
Absolutely. Yeah, we, probably the best of all, because the fire service is so much, it comes down to physical action. At some point, for the firefighter skill levels, we're talking for the entry-level firefighters, there's going to have to be some face-to-face. But yeah, we do, at the Congress, the term we use, we call it a hybrid model. So they'll do a substantial amount of their online learning and then they come together periodically. Either it can be small ti, small periods of time throughout the course, they come together and practice a few of the skills, or like we do, what we call an academy. It's firefighter one and two. They spend about six weeks online, and then they come in and they spend two weeks, all day, every day for two weeks, and do all the skills for firefighter one and two, take their certification tests at the end. That's been a popular, we actually draw people from out of state. We regularly get people from Missouri, Oklahoma, that, that come in and do that, but not everybody can commit two weeks.
Yeah.
What we've tried to do here, and we've offered in the past and we just didn't have enough people to make it go, is they could do it online and then come in like on Saturdays. So it wasn't like spending a full day of work and have to come spend a whole evening in class. They could, you know, give us like a Saturday a month over four, five, six months, get these practical skills and do the rest of it online. So yeah, there's certainly options, how we can manage to make it there. I think the pandemic has also taught us how much more we can do online because we've been forced to do it online. So yeah, I think there are definitely opportunities.
When I was with South Hedges, I went out, one, one of those years that you're in charge of a certain department, and went out to an evening training just to watch and learn, so.
The hard part, and Bruce kind of touched on it, the state of Kansas, since there's no mandatory training standard, we tell them we want it, but you can't, you don't have the force to say, "The state says you have to have it or else." We can do that, and actually, you as the fire board could do that at the county and say, "This is a mandate. If you want to be on this, if you want to be on a roster, you have to do this." But that's not the case. So it comes right down to, as a chief, yeah, I want this guy to take the training, but if he just flat refuses, but he still comes, he, he comes to our regular little trainings and he's proficient and he's help and he's showing up, and we consider him safe enough to do the job, do I want to kick him off the department? So that's, that's the balancing act with retention, is, is how far can we push and not lose without state mandates? Where, is Wisconsin state mandated training for all volunteers? That takes so many hours of training to be a volunteer.
Yes.
See, there's several states throughout the U.S. that are state mandated. That becomes somewhat easier because it's kept dry. You know, here in the state, EMT's a whole different thing. You can't just decide you want to be an EMT. There's licensing requirements and you very strictly follow them. That's never happened in the fire service here.
I would also add to that, too, in general, from what I understand, most of the fire districts, before you go into a structure fire, have to have
Yeah, we, we want
Have to have firefighter one through the college or some, or some of the documentation that says that you are certified, we trust that you have the skills and knowledge to perform that in a safe, in a safe manner.
Right. But sometimes for us, it's a matter of, that person that won't get firefighter one, we, there's other jobs on the fire scene we can use besides going in, so we have to manage people that way.
That's what I was getting at, is there, is also, is there a certain, you know, if you have one or two or, or three on that department, what you feel is satisfactory to be able to enter a structure fire and do some of the more advanced, unsafe things, then you can utilize a lot of other people with varied levels of, of
You're, you're going to have people outside the structure, outside the hot zone, dragging hoes, hooking up hydrants, working the water shuttle, things like that. But in order to go in and do actual combat firefighting, you need, you need to have that level of training. And the other thing that you're going to find is there also this called a two-in, two-out rule, that you need to have a backup crew outside in case something goes wrong, to be able to either one, relieve the crew that's inside, or two, go in and be able to effective rescue. There are also RIC crews out there, rapid intervention crews, which are meant to go in and rescue if something goes wrong. So on a true fire scene, and, and if you have more than one interior hand line working this fire, you're going to need two, four, six, eight, you're going to need a dozen people capable of going inside and doing those firefighting things. Because, especially in the rural setting, when fire has such a good chance to develop before they get there, rarely are you going to have a situation where just two people inside are going to be, take care of everything over the course of the incident.
So essentially, and I'm being awful basic over here, maybe other commissioners know a lot more than I do with this, but if you had a case like that, where you had a structure fire, you had two people on your department that were capable, you could call in another, another for mutual aid to bring their specific people in, right? So it's just a matter of communication and
And for, for me, I, I'm one of the fortunate districts. I've got a decent roster and probably, I'm not 100% on firefighter one, probably 90% of my roster already have firefighter one training. I've got retired career firefighters, I've got current career firefighters, I've got students that are in the fire program. I've got, I've got a lot of good quality people, so I typically don't have that staffing issue, but yeah, if they're qualified, we definitely can use them.
I've got some more, but I'll turn it over to my other commissioners.
I'll, I'll go next. And Bruce, I appreciate you being here and appreciate both your written and oral presentation this morning. I've got numerous questions, and so I'll just ask a couple and then let another commissioner go on and then maybe I'll get another turn. You mentioned your 35-year career in firefighting. I would be interested, and maybe you mentioned it, but maybe I missed it. How long have you been in the consulting business?
I've been in the consulting business since 20, it's been about 10 years.
10 years, okay. And about how many locations have you consulted with? How many counties or cities?
I've done numerous, different types of projects. I have, I have done evaluations. I've worked with probably half a dozen to 10 municipalities. In the state of Wisconsin, I've worked with hazardous material studies in 26 of the 72 counties. I have done work out of state in, in Texas. So it's, because I'm, I'm kind of my own company, I, I will probably do one to two projects a year. Yeah. People will generally call People will generally call me versus I don't do a lot of advertising, it's just word of mouth and through the internet.
The rest of my questions are probably not in any specific order. I was intrigued by one of the things that you said, that under a, maybe a Hutchinson expansion, that once the volunteer department gets there, that the command is subjugated to the volunteer department. For some reason, that seemed interesting to me because if the higher-trained department is already there, why would you mitigate the command?
Sure. Why would we pass command?
And, but would the higher-level department allow that to happen?
Absolutely. One thing that, and the assumption here is that both departments are equally trained in the incident command system and capable of organizing it. So out of the respect for that, it's home territory, it's on its primary jurisdiction, the company coming in, we're assuming the basic training levels, you know, are the same. Now, if, if you go in and, as you did in that one instance where the task force took over command from the home jurisdiction chief, if there's no resistance, chief says, go ahead, you have command, that's fine with me, they do it. But, you know, I would say out of respect, when a chief from another district comes in, I would always go, chief, you want command, it's yours. And they'll either say, okay, I got it, or they'll say, nope, you're doing good, you keep on, so.
But it requires some extent of somewhat equal training?
Yes.
Okay. I'll ask one more and then defer. I'm intrigued, the reason one chief said that he's not interested in response via the app by the volunteers. That makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever in this world of technology. Is there something that I'm missing here?
No, you know, his comment was, you know, hell, even I don't use it all the time. You know, so, you know, I got the sense that it's there, it's being used, it just isn't being given the level of attention that it could be. It's not being used as effectively as it could be. And I, you know, it's just an example of where there's a little bit of, I guess, apathy towards some of that. Yeah, I'm with you.
Chief White, you had a comment. I think he referenced.
Well, I was just going to, speaking to that interaction, just by virtue of our district, our district and District Three butt's up against the Hutch District now. So by nature, because when calls come into dispatch center, those calls that are on the border, they're not sure which side, sometimes which side of the road determines which, whose jurisdiction it is. And so we've had at several instances over the last few years where either it'll be, end up being in Hutch's district and we got paged, or they get paged into our district. And then when we get together, that's what we do, we work together, we just decide who's going to continue command. And oftentimes, the district, the department or district that's out of their area will still continue to be there and assist until the incident is brought down to a level. So that coordination and cooperation is already happening. We have some instances, it's just not formal. It's more under mutual aid or more like an accidental because dispatch just can't, dispatch can't see through the basement where the call is in real world. So they do the best job they can dispatching, and then we fix the exact location once we get there.
And I would agree with Randy that it's happening, but it isn't consistent. It isn't the same across the board.
Yeah, just by virtue of our location, we get to experience it probably more than anybody else.
And in ignorance, I'm suggesting that your district is one of the more qualified districts because of the history of it and with the chief doing other things.
Well, I was, I just, I want to say we're just fortunate. I don't want, yes, we're in a position, we have some ability to do some things, but there's a lot of good people out there trying to do the best they can with what they got.
So. Yeah, Bruce, appreciate your work. Very enlightening. A little discouraging, I would say, but I'd say that, you know, I think it's, I mean, the bad thing here is it seems as though we failed as the county to recognize some problems and deal with them, and now we're in this position. I think the good thing here is that we know what we're dealing with now. And I appreciate staff's work to get you here and bring this to light and allow us the opportunity to do better. So I also want to, you know, I think this is more of a failure at the top levels, especially this commission than it is any one district. I've seen through my, just work at the city of Bueller in the periphery, there's a lot of hard-working volunteers that do nothing but the best for our community and just simply use what they have. And, you know, I took note to the fact that many of the issues were related to a lack of resources. And again, I think that falls back on us. And so I just want to reiterate, you know, I think you said everybody has a little bit to blame here, but, but I think it's, it's hard. You know, we went through a presentation from the city of Hutch's Fire Department, and they appear to be, you know, on the higher end of sophistication and qualification across the United States. But it's very hard to compare that to a number of districts that are simply volunteer operators. I mean, it's just, it's not even the same situation. So I, I want to, I'm very encouraged by this. I just, I am concerned that there's a significant disparity between, you know, the sophistication we have in Hutchinson and, and what we have in the fire districts. And we may not want to create too high of expectations on the front end and allow this process to take some time. Because I see on the other end, you know, I know some of the pressures and some of the faults were kind of our fiscal concerns, but on the other end, you can't just duplicate what the city of Hutch has in the county without, you know, overextending our budget, I would assume. And so this looks like a very significant challenge for the county, but I'm encouraged with the opportunity to provide better service to our community. I guess I might, and I appreciated your point about, you know, we need to make sure we recognize the long-term value and, I'm not sure the right word, but just all of the work that people have done, you know, decades of experience, and we don't want to lose that in this transitionary process. So I really appreciated that comment, too. I guess my question is, two questions. One, is there anything we can do immediately? Are there things that we can act now to help the situation? And then, two, what is, what is our next step here?
I think immediately, open the lines of communication. I think in two aspects. One is to get the fire chiefs, the districts together like we did last night, in a slightly different way than what they're used to. When they would get together, they would be representing their own domain. And for the most part, it was, this is my area, don't mess with me, what do you want to talk about? Instead now, getting together, that the information and the concerns are on the table, being able to speak back and forth to each other in a way they haven't before, and say, what are the issues and what can we all do to make things better? Okay, I'll just give one example, that where you have to wait for a dispatch, for three dispatches before you know what's happened. The fire chiefs, I don't believe it ever sat down and said, we know that's in there, but how can we do something so that changes? And then get them to brainstorm ways. And one district might say, well, here's my issue with that. And the other district might say, no, I understand, have you tried this? I mean, you get a flow of communication and problem-solving amongst the chiefs to take care of the most immediate needs that you're referring to. The second venue for communication to me would be for you, the board of the commissioners, to get together with the chiefs in a venue and have a similar type situation. You know, you reach out and say to the chiefs, what are your biggest roadblocks to responding? And then have them tell you what their greatest roadblocks are. And then the chiefs turn to you and say, what can we do to help you do your job as a governing body of the districts? What information are you not getting from us that you need to help, you know, do that? So I think the first thing you need to do is get together and communicate on those two venues. And the company that, I think it'd be a great idea, I don't know how many of you have been to each of the fire stations to see the turf. I mean, even if it isn't your district that you represent, to get out and just see what their physical environment is, what they're dealing with, perhaps talk with some of their people. The first step is getting an appreciation and understanding upon which you can base your questions and decisions. And then that will evolve and grow into, you know, what do we do about training? Well, here's some of the options we have. What do we do about purchasing? Here's what we can do maybe to make it easier because with, you know, we're that going through emergency management. But I think the first thing is to sit down and talk about it in those different venues and get the conversation going that way, where I think a lot of the information that's in this report will come out naturally. And in the meantime, fire engines still be going to calls. I mean, that stuff will be handled like it is now, but it's, you're just starting to get the momentum going for the change. And that, that's going to start with the conversations, considering, you know, how long everything's been happening.
I know this is, might be way down the road, it might not even be way down the road, but I'm intrigued with the discussion and the comments regarding some type of a hybrid model. I'm familiar with one hybrid model, but I was intrigued by the fact that looking at two different methods on this, and that is the division leader, which reports to EMS, and the versus, the second alternative was a department leader, which reports to the administrator, where it doesn't change the districts. But it appears that it might solve or help solve some of that 30 to 40 hours a month taken by the fire chiefs for all the reporting things, that what, that's what I've heard. So I was just curious with regards to any experience you might have had with this type of model that you, that was brought up.
I can tell you back, back in Wisconsin, in Eau Claire County, that, back in the 50s, there was, we have townships back then. And back in the 50s, there were half a dozen or more townships that had their own fire department, similar to the fire districts here. And back in the 50s, they decided they, they needed to become better organized together. And they organized under Wisconsin statute 181, which is basically a not-for-profit, non-stock holding corporation. So these townships got together and formed a corporation, and they have a board of directors. And they got together and they voted in a fire chief. Then all the townships get together and they vote the fire chief in to oversee the entire organization. Each individual township still exists, they still have their fire station, they are responsible for their fire station and all that. They can, they have their fundraisers to purchase equipment, they do the things they always do. But where the board of directors comes in and the overall management is when they're looking at major purchases, apparatus. One township that may not be able to afford it on their own, the other towns come together and as part of the fiscal policy, a certain amount of money crosses borders to keep the whole well, you know, again, because people are going all through it. It was a very progressive model that they developed for back in the 1950s, and it's still, it's still intact today. In fact, I'm glad you brought that out, I went online and I printed off an article on, it was called the Township Fire Department. And this just gives a basic history of it. And to give you an idea of how that, that model functions, and has functioned for, what, 65 years, exactly, because I was born in 54, so it's easy for me to figure out how old something is, how old I am. And the chief oversees and is the leader of that area, and the battalion chiefs in each township continue to run and pay attention to their district's budget and do those things. Now, I talked to the chief before I came out, and I said, you know, they're talking about a potential consolidation, and there's different ways you can consolidate. This is kind of a unique model of an incorporation under a state statute. I says, if the folks in Reno County are interested in this model, or some form of that model, I said to the chief, would you be willing to come out and talk to them about your department, how it runs and how it functions and how, I mean, the finances, this and that goes? He said, absolutely. I'd be happy to come out, and I'll bet you some of my battalion chiefs, one of my battalion chiefs would come out as well to answer their questions. They're really proud of their organization, they're really quite progressive, they have top-of-the-line equipment. And this all grew from very humble beginnings, much like you're at here, to a very successful organization that's withstood over 65 years doing it. So that, that works well, you know, in their case, it's, they've never had an outside chief, they've always been internal. Some cases I've seen where the organizations, they bring an outside chief in to get the ball rolling because the expertise doesn't exist internally. Sometimes you have to bring an outside person in who's willing to be a little more aggressive with folks and have a thick skin and can tolerate a lot of the change to resistance to get things going. Other times, if there's a willingness from the inside to make it happen, you know, it just, it takes, you can get by with a different leadership, you know, style on that. So I will tell you, I said to the chiefs last night at the meeting, I said, this can be resolved one of two ways. You either come together as a group and make this absolutely happen and work with the board to make this happen. Or if you put there with resistance like this and go, you know, don't tread on me, then what may happen is this may be organized and put down, and you're going to have to, you know, you're going to have to respond to what, what happens down the road. So you can either be part of the problem or you can be part of the solution. And, you know, I think there was an open mindedness to talk about all of this because they want to be part of the solution. But in specific answer to your question, that's the best example I can show of something along that line that worked that was successful.
I'm concerned, like we all are, I think, with the fund, funding, being able to fund. When I look at different aspects around and I compare the per capita cost to, to fire service rural versus city and et cetera, there's a vast difference for quality, more qualities, full-time service. I don't know that the quality makes much difference, but full-time service. So that's what intrigued me about this.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I mean, the funding and that mechanism, that's a huge challenge to overcome. The one thing I will say, you want to be careful of. The one thing I will say you want to be careful of is that some departments, in the attempt to keep the budget or not spend money, I've seen departments where they've taken dairy tankers and they convert them into fire tankers, okay? And some of these may not have baffles in it, so the water, you know, if you take shortcuts and you do unsafe things like that, that's where you have accidents and injuries and fatalities. So I understand the fiscal challenge is huge, but you just want to be careful that you don't take the shortcuts to that compromise safety, and that's the challenge of walking that fine line of finding what you can do to be, to be safe and prudent.
And I even like the idea that was brought out, be brought out here regarding fundraising, you know, they have, each fire station can do their own fundraising type thing. I think that's, I think that's kind of a neat aspect that could be utilized, and I don't turn it over to Ron.
And if the communities get behind it.
You're turning it over to me. Could we have a five-minute break, and then come back for more questions?
Let's do, let's do a seven-and-a-half-minute break. How's that sound?
Thank you.
We'll recess until 10:30.
Potentially creates a higher level of liability for the county. And I'm not saying that you did that incorrectly, but you're putting us on notice that the county does have liability in some of the issues that the volunteer departments do.
Right. And bringing the awareness of what has always existed.
I'm not sure that I was as strongly aware of that as you've made that to us. I'd like just another comment or two from you about fire districts being a fraternity instead of a volunteer department. And having not ever been, as other gentlemen in the room, in a volunteer department, do at times these become more paternal instead of product oriented?
I'll preface my answer by saying, I have not been a member of a volunteer fire department myself. But I will say, based on my experiences of going into these departments and providing training, or interacting, or going to their social functions, that there is a certain percentage of folks that enjoy the thrill that goes with going into a dangerous situation. I mean, it's being able to go in and put a fire out, or affect a risk, or whatever, and enjoy the camaraderie of that occasional work amongst the others, or to be able to say, "I'm a member of the fire department," which can be prestigious in its own right. And there are a certain percentage, just like I'm sure in any organization, that are there, perhaps motivated more strongly for the wrong reasons than the right reasons. And in one case, growing up through the fire service, certainly more towards the beginning of my career, in the latter half of last century than there is today, there are people that are there because it's fun, and I'm there with my buddies, and, "Now, wait a minute. If you're gonna make me take all this training, and I have to do this and that, no, that's no, I don't want that." So, I think there is still a level of that, especially in the areas that haven't embraced the current best practices as much as others have. And I think that will eventually weed itself out as standards for the fire service, be it career or volunteer, continue to rise.
Maybe this is a question to the other three people in the room by you there. Is there any reason that you can relate to a slight decrease in the number of calls over the past 20 years? What time period were you?
Five years.
Five years? Chances?
Yeah, I mean, historically, if you go back long as I've had, it's sometimes it's slightly cyclical. You know, if you remember, like, what was that, two years ago, we had all the flooding? You know, and flooding takes up a huge part. Again, our structure fires are not a huge part of typical volunteer departments' call though. It's mostly gonna be—
Wildland.
Wildland fires are the biggest part. So, when we have weeks of flooding, that stuff's not gonna burn. So, like, we had a significant drop in the number of calls just because everything was wet and green. So, sometimes that happens, sometimes, like, even just when harvest happens, or what the weather's like then, some harvests have a lot more fires than others, just because of it's tinder-dry, and the equipment, and the bearing gets a little hot. So, I think five years ago, we've had a trend, but we've been relatively wet and cool.
Okay. What percentage of the fire calls in the rural areas are either wildfire or agri-related? Sixty, seventy percent?
I would say, in my district, probably about fifty percent.
Fifty?
Or somehow related to a live fuel, whether it's an agri-late, or even just a spark off of a car, cut the ditch on fire, but it's gonna be grass-type materials.
I'd say a little bit higher than that, really, I think. At least, further west you go, it's more agricultural, grass-type, where it's accidental or intentional, or whatever. It's more of a wildland than it is a structural. And that's, like you said, that's the nature of it. I mean, there's residents are not there, the housing and the structure's not there. But, yeah, you're gonna have the grass fires, it's gonna be a lot.
Yeah. I mean, you have lightning, trains, you name it. And the unique thing about the wildland fire aspect is the tinder, the burnable materials, I mean, is, I mean, and with the weather conditions, it can grow and spread fast.
But just put this last four months. I mean, when we were in a dry period, we were really hot and going, and now it's gotten some green, some moisture, there's nothing there. It's seasonal as well, cyclical, is over the years how that all works.
Bruce, I was interested in your comments about the Hutchinson Department receiving their ISO rating. We've heard a lot about that locally. Is that as significant as we're being told that these people are qualified to have that rating?
A lot goes into an ISO rating, from water supply, if you have a hundred-foot aerial ladder. I mean, there's just a lot to consider, the training, the equipment. So, typically, you will see urban fire departments have a higher ISO rating than rural fire departments, just the nature of the beast. You know, there's several departments have taken it upon themselves to get certification because it's a goal, it's a source of pride. I mean, you're in probably the very low percentage of departments across the country that achieve that, if you're one of those few that do that. It's not unusual for me to have seen ISO ratings in rural departments of six, five. What's your experience with some of them, and how high would they get?
Well, I mean, there are, nationwide, there are actually some volunteers who are ISO one. But it takes a huge amount. And like you said, infrastructure's a lot of it. About fifty percent of your score is water supply.
Ours have run around five, six, seven, and eight.
And that's what really drops rural departments, is you don't have hydrants on every corner.
Our rural departments in the county have an ISO rating?
Yeah.
I would not over that.
And that impacts your homeowner's insurance?
Yes, but it seems like it doesn't as much as it used to, is there—
That would probably be an underwriter question.
I've asked those questions in the past.
Some insurance companies quit using ISO. They're going strictly off lost data.
Also, a lot of it on water supply, as well as upper capacity.
Yeah, and disrespect anybody that's pushing for high ISO ratings. The interesting part of ISO, it has nothing to do with your effectiveness of putting a fire out, or your tactics. It's the equipment you own, it's how fast you respond,
The infrastructure.
How many people you have on staff, it's how much water supply you have. There's no analyzation as to your ability to actually put a fire out goes into the equation.
Okay, I guess the next is maybe not a question as much as a comment. And that's one of my big problems with my duties as a commissioner, is I can't speak to the other commissioners at any time other than these meetings, is there's been several suggestions made today that it's maybe our duty to go out and see these facilities, and know their needs, and communicate, and have a sit-down meeting, and all this. But from my standpoint, and I'm not saying that I'm not willing to do that, but it seems like to me that we are best served by a county administrator being our leader in the county, and doing the things that the county commission asks him to do, and prioritize, and so forth. And the county administrator has staff that work for him, or her, and that we might be better served thinking through the things that we're hearing today, and will hear in the next month or two, and coming up with a suggestion to our county staff of how to proceed, or how to go about improvements. That creates a long-term relationship with these people, that I wouldn't have been here for two more years, or something of this nature. And to me, that might be a more effective form of government than your suggestion of being onsite.
That suggestion was more for a foundation, for an understanding.
I would accept that.
And I'll give you an example. Back home, we would invite city council members to come to the station. We'd have an open house, or they'd wanna know how something works. And we would do that through the city manager. We wouldn't go behind the back or anything. But just to provide a foundation, a basis of information or understanding, it wasn't intended for them to become an immediate supervisor of the stations or anything like that. It's just kind of like, "Well, you're in charge of everything, you should at least have a basic understanding of what we're talking about, so when things do come up in conversation, you might be able to say, 'Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about, I was there.'"
You're right in what you're saying. You mentioned medical, and you mentioned the volunteer departments having CPR license document. Help me with—
Yeah, CPR certification.
In your view of, do you have any views on how this relates to providing medical services to the rural areas?
It all depends on the structure of how you want that form of emergency service delivered. Back home, I mentioned the organization, the incorporation of the Township Fire Department. They have a sub-organization called Emergicare. And they have people who have gone and received their EMI, EMR, Emergency Medical Responder Training, used to be known as first responder, at least in Wisconsin, now it's EMR. So, they have a group of people who respond primarily to medical emergencies, just like firefighters will respond to fires. And some cross over and do both. So, in our area, they chose to organize this volunteer group of emergency medical responders that go out and do that. And then they supplement on-scene first response, where the ambulances will then come and transport. But they, living in the communities, can get there faster and provide initial first aid. And their training is, it's a state-recognized certified, you know—
Do we have anything like that, Ed? Other than the fire districts?
No, we don't have anything like that. It depends on which fire district you're in as well, who runs on what calls. So, there's no standardization across jurisdictional boundaries.
Well, the complicating factor is, like, I have members on my department, they're EMTs, and other districts do too. If, as the fire department getting paged out, and it's not a matter of having a certified individual, my agency, if I'm going to do medical care, I have to have a medical director, and I have to have protocols that have been approved by the medical director, and are on file with the state or EMS, or else I'm operating outside of my scope of practice also. Even though I have a card in my pocket that says I'm a licensed EMT, if I don't have that medical supervision in my organization, I'm still violating the law at that point. So, like, in my district, we don't do any EMS calls, other than we're lift assist, or we will be, we'll assist like CPR, because CPR is a layperson. So, in the county, we use what's called pit crew CPR, and it takes preferably these five or six people. So, we supplement the two people on an EMS truck. But then, our primary response, Nickerson EMS is a volunteer service, and we contract with them to provide first response EMS within our district, and in Reno County, it's still the transport service. But, yeah, it gets complicated with the scope of practice, and medical protocols, and medical direction to stay legal.
In the county, the districts that do run on medical calls have the same medical director as EMS, and they follow the same protocols. So, ones that are running on medical calls are, do have a medical directorship.
Now, are you talking ambulance services, or are you talking first response?
First response.
I know it's a can of worms to start talking about EMS and all of this, but I think it's worth a conversation, given we've already opened a can of worms here. There seems to be some synergy with further consolidation potentially, or at least a discussion of that. I know City of Hutch runs, the fire department runs a significant amount of medical calls. They may run all of them, I don't know, but, you know, they're already there, so it makes some sense to discuss that. I know, again, from experience in Bueller, we used to have our own ambulance, we used to run medical calls. That fire district decided, I think it was an issue of liability, and just overall complexity associated with maintaining the right certifications, and who does what. And I think that complexity led to them reducing that service, which, from a city's perspective, was concerning, because it just increased our response time. But they just didn't have the manpower, from a volunteer perspective, to do that, nor to deal with the complexity. And I know, I think I read recently, you know, City of Haven has their own EMS service, and they're having budgetary issues. And it seems like it's at least worth a conversation to see whether we're duplicating a number of emergency medical services that could be consolidated, and actually save the taxpayers in the county some money, if we were to have that discussion. So, this appears to be a significantly complex issue that is going to require, I mean, I think what we have here today is a study of, a report of the situation as it is today, and some general recommendations. But it seems to me, we need to determine a course, and then have a plan to execute, and to develop that plan is going to take some significant amount of work. And from what we need to do today, I mean, I think perhaps this commission could, you know, do a few things, and I think we could instruct staff to, as Commissioner Sellers said, you know, start the process internally, maybe meet with the fire chiefs again. I think one of the commissioners should be there. I mean, I'd volunteer to go to one of those. And I'd like, number one, get from them what we can do immediately, and bring that back, and let's just get that done. Number two, you know, maybe have the second conversation as to what are your ideas, and get that flowing back to staff. And then, number three, I think we should instruct staff to have a meeting with the City of Hutch Fire Department, and gauge their interest. And then, I think with that information, maybe we could, like I said, set a course, and then start working on developing a plan. Maybe we should have a conversation with EMS as well. But we're not gonna solve this problem in this meeting.
Well, I don't think anybody's suggesting that we shouldn't try to solve it. Commissioner Friesen, I go back to Commissioner Larson's letter that you printed thirty-five years ago. It seems like we're pretty much in the same place we were thirty-five years ago, and so to solve it today, I don't think is, or maybe even try to go in direction today. I kind of feel like that, from this report that we've received, and I feel it's a very quality report that we received from our consultant, with a couple different options for recommendations, I think we ought to give staff some time to digest it, and maybe staff come to us with some recommendations that we can either approve, or alter, or all. And that, again, goes to the fact that I think we're hiring a county administrator to be the chief administrator for the county, and the commission ought to listen to his viewpoints on how we best, long-term, run the county. I think we've got people in the room that are trained to be administration people, and not that I don't want to be in the decision, but I think that they can give us better options than we, as individual commissioners, can come up with to solve the issues. The only thing that I think I kind of maybe somewhat disagree with Commissioner Friesen and some of your suggestions, is how to be more economical. I don't think anything that we're gonna do is gonna save any money. I'd like it to, but it won't happen, so we figure out—
I think this report indicated a need for more resources, which will create a need for more funding, but I think there are opportunities to save expenses by not duplicating things. It doesn't mean, by the time you add more resources, that it's not gonna be more expensive. But, you know, I agree with your points. I do think we should give staff some general direction today, so they can move forward.
And you know, I, for one, I've been out to, I've attended a couple or three fire chiefs meetings, that weren't heavily attended by the fire chiefs, but on, I think we've got an opportunity here that we haven't had before with regard to the volunteer departments, is because Hutchinson's fire chief, Chief Bear, came from a county that had fourteen volunteer fire departments. And so, I think he well understands relationships between volunteer fire departments, and even the Hutchinson Fire Department.
How many do we have?
I think that's a real plus in that fact, and I firmly intend to go out and catch the three or four different, one, two, three, three fire departments that I haven't been in before, in my district at least. And I wanna come up, take a look at, we saw pictures provided by us, by Chief White, and of his conditions up there at Nickerson. And so, I wanna make one statement, and I would say that no one here is questioning any commitment, or all the commitment of the chiefs, or the volunteers that are out there in the fire districts, that are doing the job. But I think now that communication and some information has been, thanks to the survey, and the one-on-one visits with the fire chiefs, like was had the other night, last night, I think that communication's been opened up. I think both parties now, fire chief, the districts, the commission, can continue that progress toward improvement. And it's not gonna be just the commission, it's not gonna be just a fire chief, it's gonna be a combination of both of us getting together and visit. And I do kind of like the idea, not only of staff being there involved, but I think that's something that the fire board, the commission, should be involved in conversations with that. And I know that entails an open meeting, but there are times, I think, where one commission, as Commissioner Friesen has offered, can be involved. I think there's times that maybe all of us should be involved. I think there's some work behind the scenes that, like Commissioner Friesen said, he'd be happy to attend. I think that offers pluses, but I think there's times when we all need to be involved. That's just my thoughts. And so, you know, there's lots of, I like the summaries you put together here. I think that summary's, and the fire districts all have these summaries too. And so, we've gotta start. And couple that with a meeting with EMS involved, because I've been out to some of the fires, I've been out to see the command centers, understand a little bit more about it, and especially introduced to the big fire two years ago, and then the smaller ones, which weren't that small. And I've been on them out in Southern. Saw Todd down at West of Pretty Prairie on one here a year ago, and was out to the other one. And I think the command centers have a real positive handling, and I think they get along together. So, anybody have any more questions, or?
Well, I, again, think we need to set some direction today before we leave.
I agree, Daniel. In fact, I was gonna make a comment to what you already proposed, but so that this doesn't get dropped, which is an easy thing for elected people to do, is put this on the shelf, and we'll talk about it thirty-five years from now. My suggestion would be is to ask staff to think this through, and come back to the commission with two or three different ideas, or one favorable idea, and a subset of that for the commission to either agree or disagree upon. But I think that, to me, those suggestions should come from staff, but not from us.
I'd like to ask the consultant what he thinks our next direction should be, and as well as EMS, as well as Chief White, since he's here. Input from the people at ground level.
Excuse me, I'll go back to my previous comment. You know, the chiefs are well aware of everything, and part of the conversation has been that they don't always, they don't see the commission like they'd like to, there's kind of a separation, they don't see the county administrator like they'd like to. I would go back, and again, say, now that this is all on the table, to direct the staff to set up an initial meeting, to just sit down and get a feel for how everybody feels, now that this information report is out, and everybody's read about it, and put the question out there to the group, you know? Where do you wanna go? How do we wanna start this? And see what the group dynamics bring out. Everything starts with communication, and I think whatever recommendation your staff is going to bring to you is going to be a result of that communication. So, I mean, I would suggest that the staff meet with the chiefs, the appropriate people meet with the chiefs, and then the commission, or a representative, meet with the chiefs, and see what direction that comes from. I don't know, Randy, if you've had some, you've had some thoughts on this already before, too.
Well, I guess my thought is, kind of as Commissioner Friesen, in a way, said some direction, but the expectations of setting up meetings, or meeting with the fire chiefs, what is the expectation? Is it to go back and ask the same questions, or is it to have ideas with the report? Here's what we can do, how do you think that would work? So, but it kind of depends on what the county commission, as the commission, where you guys are leaning. Are you, you know, wanting to move forward for the future, you know, the betterment of fire districts in Reno County? Or are you wanting to just kind of find out what's going on, and set the report on the shelf? Because as staff, we need to make sure that you have our backs when we make, when we go down a direction, and not just gonna say, "Wait, now we've heard something, we're gonna go back, never mind." So, that's kind of what I would wanna know before sitting down with all the chiefs, is where you guys are kind of wanting it to go a little bit. But I agree, we need to meet with the chiefs, and the commission needs to meet with them.
I'll give you four of my directions that I would like to see, not being too basic, but training, addresses, in other words, cross addresses.
What's that second one?
Addresses, which means if you've got a fire department close by, and they don't know, I think Chief White brought it up, which address, which side of the street it's on.
That's like, I mean, it's because we get passengers by on cell phones, and they don't know really where they're at. they don't know really where they're at, so they can have the best guess they know. I mean, South Hutch just had that yesterday or before, they told them it was in Hutch's territory, and they got there and know it's actually in South Hutch's territory. Dispatch based it on what they got information over the phone, so something you're not going to fix because it's.
At least some type of methodology or some type of way to handle it, okay? You've already got.
Well, and within the agencies, we already do, the idea is, what I direct my people, as soon as we go around, we realize it's not our district, we let dispatch know where it actually is and whose district it is and to get them in route, and we'll still continue on to provide service until the other district gets there.
I just want to say a uniform method of handling.
Yeah, now whether everybody has that directive for their their firefighters, I don't know.
Three, three, automatic aid, I think that was brought out, automatic aid, whatever you want to call it, mutual aid.
Oh, there's a difference. Mutual aid is when you call for help because you need it. Automatic aid is made that is dispatched immediately upon the call, so you know it's it's coming. And the automatic aid is where we have to hiccup with the state station.
Okay, that's where I'm talking about, when there's that eight, three calls with nobody responding, that part of the communication board.
Gotcha.
And the other one, down towards the bottom, would be a conversation since we heard that most of them would, and that's potential centralized management.
Well, so.
You guys come up with some of the others, and we'll come up with some.
So I, like, Ron, I think you're a problem solver like me, right? But I think I think that's, we're a little too deep already, and we need to, I think your point five, I think, is where we need to start and and determine how we're going to reorganize first before we look at, you know, once you reorganize, I think that team would certainly take our input, but they probably have an idea of how to fix a lot of these issues too. And until we know what the team is and who's involved, I don't know that we're going to be in the best position to address a lot of those issues on the top four that you you recommended.
What's point five? I'm confused.
After this, you were talking about the centralized, were you?
Yeah, it's just centralization or consolidation or, you know, cooperation with with the city of Hutch. Well, you know, that's the big issue, is how we're going to reorganize.
Well, I I disagree. I I disagree that that's the biggest issue.
Biggest issue.
I think the biggest issue is is to to get understanding and cooperation in the whole county. And, you know, I represent District One, which is a city district, and I know Chief Bear fairly well and so forth, and I'm certain that he's listening to this conversation today because he has interest in the in the outcome. And I think that conversations with his department for suggestions and and cooperation are important to this discussion, but I don't think that I'm willing to say that City of Hutchinson is going to be in charge of this project. I think that somewhere along the line, our emergency management people have a big stake in this because and and the county is not the city, and I want to be very careful about what.
Well, that's not, that's not what I was saying. But we're not on the same page. We we got to do better as a commission. Like every meeting, we're not, we're not gelling very well.
Well, I think.
No, I mean, I I think Randy gave some feedback to me that he he feels like we're not. And and so we 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 need to make sure we're all on the same page. I was not suggesting that City of Hutch take over this project. I think what I what I'm suggesting here is that we, you know, I was essentially agreeing with you, Commissioner Sellers, that we empower staff to go and figure out what our next steps are, and and I was simply stating that perhaps, you know, talking about the specific things that we could do better are getting the cart before the horse and that we need to determine how we're going to work together first. And so I was agreeing with you in a lot of ways, I think, more than than that. And so I'm hopeful we can be unified in this and not confuse staff as to where we're headed here.
And my idea with potential centralized management had more to do with the hybrid model that was brought up here. It wasn't a whole county, it was the hybrid model brought up with a a division chief or something like that. It wasn't meant to be that direction if it was taken that way, but.
I I would just put out for consideration that everything is going to start with your chiefs buying in to whatever it is you decide to do, because they are going to be the ones that have to convince their folks. I mean, there's some chiefs out there that are afraid if you change the system, they're going to lose firefighters because they, you know, they're fear of it. So, you know, you you get that crew of professionals working with you, and you all can agree on a common goal, then things are going to happen. But I I would say you have to start with them, listen to their concerns or issues, they need to listen to yours, and then you need to get a consensus in that arena first, and then things will begin to roll and ideas will flow. And you can put ideas out to them, and you can talk about the different options, but there needs to start getting some cohesiveness in in that area first.
Yes, do I give you a direction?
I think I think we need to be specific, so there's there's clarity.
Not make a suggestion?
Yeah.
So I I think, one, I told Randy on break, I think two things to start all the way around communication accountability. The reason things haven't changed in 35 years is nobody's made the change. It's just like when you're raising your kid, kids don't willingly go in and clean their room. You got to make them clean their room. And so there's some accountability level, and I'm not saying our chiefs are kids, but that's just a basically one that most of us have dealt with. I think, again, no offense to the commissioners, I was, I'm glad Bruce brought back the 86 memo. Well, that was a little bit before my start time, I started 88. My district was kind of the center of the whole brouhaha that caused that whole thing, and so I got some information.
Yeah, that was directed towards your district.
Yeah, that, you know, so I kind of got some insight from there. But one of the things, commissioners, I say this gently, you guys have districts as a commission, but as a fire board, you are all equal members of every fire district board in the county. Everyone of you is a member of the Turon District, you're a member of the Sylvia District, Bueller, Nickerson, wherever. It's not just your normal county district. As a fire board, you're part of all of those. And so that that's part of it to 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 keep in mind, and and this is a suggestion that popped into my head, not saying it's the right one, but it's came to my, Commissioner Sellers, you're talking about fire board and your ability to deal with things, is, Joe, you can jump in. The commission does not have to be the fire board. The fire board was separate prior to 86. I don't know why the county couldn't appoint members of the staff to be the fire board that reports to the commission, and that's an option. County fired, I I use the term county fire minister, Bruce and I talked about this at length in our meetings, as a centralized oversight manager, that's certainly an option. But I think right now it's get the chiefs together with whoever, whether it's a work session like this with all the cap, all the commissioners, or individual or staff, I think it's important to build trust. So we identify the things we want to fix, and I think we pick what you would call the low-hanging fruit, the non-controversial, fairly easy to fix, we just have a conversation, and we need to build some trust and have some successes before we really jump into the really hard stuff. Because there is a lot of, there's a lot of angst among the fire chiefs and distrust or whatever you want to call it from 35 years of duties, and we've got to build that back up from ground zero.
Is that true, Joe, that the commission can, if we would want to, and I'm not saying we want to, appoint a fire board other than ourselves that's responsive to us? I I thought the state specifically said.
I think maybe we need to have an understanding of what that is. You've used fire board in terms of the governing body of of the district. The statutes allow for the Board of County Commissioners to, for each district to appoint a board of trustees, and that's what it talks about, that would provide the type of services that the Board of County Commissioners does, probably not the taxing authority, but but they never wanted to go there. Bobby, they did have, they they came up with a hybrid version called an advisory board in each district way back when, and and the main purpose of that was for each of those advisory boards to advise the county commissioners at budget time about the level of service that those taxpayers in that district expected and and therefore the level of taxation that would occur to provide that. And they were to meet with the county commission in an early summer or whatever to provide that information. And this was long before I came, actually, I mean, there was time here before I came, but I came in 85, but that had evolved over the years to where the advisory boards kind of started functioning like a fire board without any, without any legal authority whatsoever. In fact, one of them even opened up a bank account and was drawing fire district funds into a bank account that they were managing, and the Board of County Commissioners was unaware of that. And they found out because a chief complained that he he couldn't get the resources to buy equipment or whatever, and so the county commission reexamined the purpose of the advisory board, it really wasn't functioning as 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 was intended, and and the board opted to assume more of its legal responsibilities to 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 manage the district. And with that, the advisory board said that they they were unwilling to serve in an advisory capacity if if their authority, which which they had sort of commandeered, if you will, over the years, was going to go away, why they they chose not to participate, so the advisory boards went away. But they really were not a fire board as such, and and they could not legally have functioned as such, but so.
I think you have an advisory board to report it to, then, if I understand, if they could appoint a fire advisory board to do the interaction with the fire districts and report back if they don't feel they have time to come directly talk.
Yeah, it depends on what what information, what what sort of subject matters or information are they seeking advice on. And 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 they'd have to be, I mean, potentially, you're talking about having a a board in each district, or at least in one district, that would provide advice to the county administrator, the fire chief, or what what would be the functions? You'd have to be quite precise, it seems to me, if you establish such a board, as to what the duties and responsibilities are. And and is that necessary? Is it necessary in today's world, do, would an advisory board want to address the issues of level of service? I mean, because Bruce is talking about a a common level of service based upon professional standards, and and are we talking about something other than that? For, I mean, I I don't know.
I would just say if if the question is, who oversees the fire districts, I mean, 3601 is, 193601 is pretty clear, it says the Board of County Commissioners of the county shall be and constitute the governing body of each fire district within the county.
That's right.
So the question is, to what extent can they delegate those responsibilities to a different format?
If the provision regarding the trustees is still in there, and it may not be, it wouldn't be, it'd be later on in the statutes, Bruce, but i- if there is a a provision for the board to establish, county commissioners to establish a board of trustees, that board would assume all the responsibilities they have, probably except for taxation.
The only one that this says in the next paragraph is the Board of County Commissioners may delegate any of the powers and duties of the county clerk and county treasurer, specifically they identify that, but they don't mention, and it may be further in the statute, but they don't mention any more of that than what I have in here.
Very important question. I'm going to throw out an idea to get started on. Why don't staff ask the fire chiefs what they would like to start with discussion on this? Okay? And let's find out what they really think. Maybe maybe they have two or three items. I'm asking, we got a fire chief here, we got emergency management here, so we've got the powers, what would you think of something like that? And then we could get started with something.
From my experience with the chiefs, we'll send out emails, we'll we'll make phone calls, and they're they're less than responsive to us. What I would like to see is the commission take some sort of stance, whether we're ready to implement a change and the commission's going to support that, or we want to keep it status quo and continue like we've done for the past 35 years. If we're ready to start implementing a change, then I think we set up a meeting with the fire chiefs, say, let's let's have a frank conversation and start that conversation with the fire chiefs and say, where would you guys like to go, or where where would you support the county going? And then with conversations with them, we can work on formulating compliance.
Be careful if you ask them where they want to go, if the question is, we don't know because we're happy with the way it's been, they might need, where do you want to go to accomplish some of the recommendations and meeting current standards and that, you know? I think if you set that out as a goal, how do we get to the next level of improvement? Then they know they have to talk about it.
I think accountability has a big part of that, because the understanding needs to be, we're moving forward no matter what. And as a group, we decide this is where we're going, and we're going to expect compliance across the board, and you're going to need to decide are you going to comply or not? And if you choose not, then it's our decision, we may make the decision how we're going to move forward, you know, with, and that's, quite frankly, one of the things, people are willing to be defiant because they can, and there is no retribution.
Adam, do you, do you think there are other parties we need to communicate with besides the fire chief?
I think right now the the fire chiefs would be the best place to start. They're the ones that are going to be impacted, and it's, I do think, if if we implement any change, there's going to be, there's going to be upset fire chiefs, there's going to be upset firemen, but that's that's the nature of change, people don't like it. But to to better ourselves as responders and as a county, we have to make a change, and we would need support.
What about conversation with the city of Hutch? I mean, that was the recommendation at the end of this report.
I I think that's a little premature.
Yeah.
You've got to keep in mind too, that you're looking at just the three, three districts or sixes that are closest to Hutch. You still have a bunch of other fire districts that have interaction with them, but not on a more day-to-day like District Three or District Eight or Bueller because they're so much closer. Seven would love to come up and help, but they're so far away. I mean, it's not feasible unless it's a major grass fire where you all come because it has to. And and they want to do that, they really want to help. So does Six, so does Four, so does Pretty Prairie. But you, we need to start looking at the county as the whole picture and not just this area right around Hutch.
Hutch Fire is kind of an extra layer over top of the existing system.
Well, I I just feel like, I mean, they're, they're, they're well-qualified fire district in our county, and for them not to be part of the conversation seems a little silly.
Well, I think they would be part of the conversation, but I I would submit, you get your house in order first, and you get a solid foundation where this, the these districts are together, there there's synergy there, there's there's a basic level of of training and quality, I mean, and all that stuff there. And then when you feel pretty strong that that you've got a a strong component, then bring them in and see what they can offer to help improve it even beyond. But I think if you bring them in too early, it's going to look like you're bringing the city in to solve the problems, and that's, that's not going to be well. city in to solve the problems, and that's not going to be well-accepted.
I completely agree with that process.
Aren't there fire districts, too, so the city fire chief is still going to be at the meeting with the other fire districts? Just not the discussion of having them take care of it?
District Two is not a volunteer district, so it never has been.
Let's keep it a volunteer district conversation.
Yeah, and I think, again, all fire chiefs are risk managers, whether they want to admit it or not, and Chief Beerfield understands that, and I think Bruce is right on point. When he's going to come into other districts, he's assuming some risks, and if he's walking into a good, solid system, he's going to be much more comfortable putting his people in that situation than a system that's in disarray. So from a risk management standpoint, like Bruce said, if our house is in order and we're doing everything right, that conversation may go much easier.
Well, that, and as a career chief, I'm sensitive to the culture of the volunteer. It's a different organization than a career organization, and I personally would feel really apprehensive if I was going to walk into my county's group and have, you know, this established group of chiefs, and this has been going on for decades, and then say, here's what I think you ought to do. I mean, I personally would feel uncomfortable doing that. If they're organized and they're open to ideas and we're going to work together and there's not a perceived threat either way, I'm fine with that. But I think to begin with, with as much work needs to be done, these chiefs need to begin the process of change, and I'll even say healing, internally to become a stronger group themselves to begin with.
Can we then direct Randy and Emergency Management to start this process?
Well, I think, I'm fine having the conversation. I mean, it's, we're talking on both sides here, because, you know, here, Adam, say we're not organized, and we need to be organized, and there's not a lot of interest, and maybe what you're saying is that that's our fault and we need to fix that, so that's fine. If we can figure that out and get interest, the presentation you gave today was, nearly all of it was indicating significant deficiencies, and what I saw there was significant resources are needed, and in your experience, can you just turn the switch and take a volunteer system like that and turn it into, and resolve all of those deficiencies that we have? Is that, are there feasible paths to get there?
What do you make of turning the switch?
Well, I think some of it is just the fact that it is what it is. It's a volunteer system, and, you know, you have to, it looks like, change the structure somewhere in order to get out of the cycle that we've had for decades. And so, again, it goes back to what I saw you pointing out, were all the things the city of Hutch is doing right now. And I'm not trying to say the city of Hutch needs to take over the county fire districts. I'm just saying, you're pointing out what appears to be a full-time, professionally-run fire system, and that's not the structure we have in a volunteer...
Right, and I'm not suggesting that we go that way, that you go... To me, before you can change a system, you have to change the attitudes, and you have to have the chiefs say, you know, we need to manage better. We need SOGs, we need training, you know, we need a plan for physical soundness.
And your experience is a volunteer group of individuals are willing to put that much effort into...
Some are, and some aren't, and those that aren't need to realize maybe their time of service is over. And, I mean, that, we had a younger individual, he's a firefighter, at that meeting, and he spoke up and related how he has to do things in his business that he doesn't always understand or agree with, but he understands why they're required to be done for safety. And, you know, he started mentioning that, and I will say that inside I'm thinking, there's young blood, there's the next generation, there's energy, he gets it. This can happen. So you have to have that attitude, that spark, you know, begin to get in and have those change the attitude to embrace that type, and it's not, you're not going to flip a switch and make it happen, but you're going to begin the process, as you're saying, that it will occur over time. It'll never be a municipal department, and I don't think any volunteer department ever will, but there are certain fundamental tenants of fire service, because fire and hazmat and EMS is the same whether you live in the city or you live in Timbuktu. There are certain tenants of dealing with those situations that are fundamental that everybody needs to buy into and participate to a minimum level, and I think that's what we're trying to do here to begin with, is recognize what the deficiencies were and find a way to begin to get up to that level, and once you're at that level, then you can start looking beyond that and seeing where you want to go.
So would you say that we need to establish a minimum set of, here's what our expectations are of fire departments in the county? And if, you need to tell us whether you feel like you can handle this with a volunteer operation or not? And if you can't, then I think maybe there's...
I think it can be handled with a volunteer operation, and in some instances, it's what they call a combination department. They may have one full-time career fire chief, and everybody else is paid on call or volunteer, but you need to have someone at the helm that can facilitate that to do it. So even those that maybe have a difficult time embracing the whole picture and getting it done, if you have the leadership that comes and says, I need you to tell me how you want the process of safely filling those air cylinders done, that person can sit down and say, yeah, I can tell you how to do it safely, that's right up my alley, you know, I'm an engineer, and then they do it. And then the leader takes that and molds it into a standard operating guideline. The person who wrote that procedure may not be thinking SOG or anything else, but it's, any leader, a good leader relies on two things. One, they realize it's his or her people that make things happen, and that makes that leader look good. And two, is that if they can relate to those folks and provide the right direction and the framework, these things which may appear to be lofty can certainly be done from the ground up, but it takes that core leader to be able to guide that and make that happen and put it all together, because we're all at different places as human beings.
I just think it needs to be clearly relayed what the expectations are, what is coming, you know, new policies, new procedures. Is that something that you chief and your people have the time and ability to handle? And I think it's, like, I'm just worried that we're going to develop this ideal standard that I think they would agree with. Yes, that's what we need to do it, but they may also say, we don't have the time.
Well, and with all due respect, I would say it's not an ideal standard. I would say it's a best practice that the majority of departments across the country are doing and are finding a way of doing it, and those that aren't doing it are in rooms just like we are across the country at one point or another, figuring out how to get it done, because it's something that's just got to get done, and every community, every county is going to find a way to do it itself. So I'm not throwing out lofty stuff. I mean, this is like Fire 101 type of a thing that our management should be getting and doing.
And you feel, you've seen volunteer...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, that's what I would like to see from staff is...
Remember, volunteers are people like yourself, they're sharp businessmen, they're the salt of the earth, community members that do it, they're experienced with life, I mean, they can do it, and some of them have the administrative skills to pull it together, and others don't. But to have a volunteer department, you know, like you have here, they make a commitment to come and do something for practically nothing, because it's for the community, and they're sharp people. I truly believe that can be accomplished here.
Yeah, I don't, I do not doubt they would do everything they can. I just, I don't want to burden them to the point where they...
Would this be a way to get started? We can talk about all things, but that's to have staff work together to create, it's item D on your list. Start to create and kind of the adoption of a strategic plan to set priorities for meeting the county's fire service needs, and put together an agenda and put together what do they want there and how they want it. Adam, does that...
We can start down that path. I think it's going to be, I think we can put together something fairly quickly with the chiefs and try to get them together and get some ideas out there, a strategic plan. We'll have to figure out where...
That'll come, but I guess to start in that progress...
We can start in that progress, but we really have to know where the commission's at. If the commission wants to implement change, if they're open to change, yeah, we'll go down that path. We don't want to open a door and upset a bunch of people and say, hey, we're going to change things, if the commission's truly not ready to make changes.
What do you want to do? Just tell us what you want to do.
Do you want a motion? Do you want a...
They need to make a motion, because if we don't have any, with three commissioners going in different directions, staff has no direction without knowing a vote.
I think if we hear what staff wants, like, we could make a motion.
I think for me, it's to tell us that the commission supports a change, get together with the fire chiefs, and come up with a plan of action to start implementing positive changes for all the county fire districts would be a good start. Randy, would you want to chime in there?
No, I mean, I agree. I mean, yeah, to direct staff to, you know, to start going down this strategic plan, but knowing that if that, if the county commission is willing to stand behind, change is coming. There's some change coming, even if you don't say what that change exactly is, but change, this status quo isn't going to be accepted anymore.
Okay, to move this along, I kind of agree with Commissioner Hurst. I like paragraph D under subsection 1, the first two paragraphs. I would make the motion that the commission direct staff to proceed with paragraph 1 and paragraph 2 of item D.
Could I recommend, too, I think it's very important, that, and it's consistent, I think, with what you've said today and what Adam recommended, that I would like the motion to also say that this board accepts the findings, goals, and recommendations of the report. Because if you do that, then you put your support behind the next part of it, and that is directing the county administrator and staff to explore with the chiefs ways to bring the recommendations about. I mean, and so if they, he or they go, they go about that task, then the chiefs know that you've taken a position in support of change. I mean, that's what I think is important.
Acceptable to you?
Yes.
Good. I have a motion, is there a second?
I'd like to see an initial deadline.
I'll second it so we can discuss it, or you want to...
I'd like to see an initial deadline for a report back.
Good point.
Good idea. I guess I'd like Adam to talk about what the deadline should be, the three listed. Ninety days, 120 days?
I'd like something quicker. I mean, I would like to get something, maybe in the next 30 days, or at least before we go into this next budget cycle, we would have some sort of idea. If we're looking at bringing on a full-time position, we need to get that in the budget cycle, so I would like something quicker than 90 days.
About June 8th for a first report.
I would amend my motion to include the date of June 8th for a report.
You can just put that out.
Get it worked, Adam?
That would give us a week before the next meeting. That is the first meeting, excuse me.
I mean, if you've got something sooner, we can always get it on each other.
That seems like too soon to me, but the world doesn't work that fast.
As everybody understands a motion, I guess everybody understands it, with the June 8th report back. Any further discussion?
Initial report.
The initial report, yeah. I'll take roll call then.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes. All right, now, what else does anyone have? Stand by, I appreciate the fact that progress is being, I think we all, that we need to look at this, progress is made, and that we had an extremely good report here with instructions and analysis of our present volunteer fire department. It needs adjournment.